Twenty-six to order. Councilman Azzi, will you lead us in pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Excuse me. Husjev?
Here.
Gustan?
Here.
Zadra?
Here.
Sforazza?
Yes.
Dorch?
Here.
Azzi?
Here.
Shell?
Absent.
Before we look at the approval of the agenda, pulled items are none today, none, no proclamations nor presentations. Public comment will be held shortly, scheduled for 12:00 noon. Public hearings at 12:15, F-1 Amber Meadows, F-2 Military Road Abandonment, and F-3 Demontie Ranch Village 20. There will be a joint Reno City Council and Redevelopment Agency Board meeting following this meeting, scheduled for noon, but it'll follow this meeting, and staff has requested that items C-1 and C-2 on that joint meeting be continued until the February 9th, 2011 meeting.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, we would request that you consider pulling item H-2. We have to provide, get some more information on that plan, and it'll come back to you in February at the next meeting or soon after, as we can get it to you.
The multi-hazard mitigation?
Yes, and we double-check the timing. There's no definite timing or concern with moving at a meeting.
Okay, we will pull that. Any other changes, additions or deletions to the agenda? We have a motion to approve by Councilman Zadra, seconded by Councilman Dorch. Any further conversation? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sam Dene.
Sam Dene, Encyclopedia Reno Government. And I was watching the governor's presentation. I started to say speech, but it wasn't really a speech. It was a presentation because he was reading it. And I was very proud of the fact that he did nothing to hide the fact that he was reading his presentation. Many of these gurus go out there and they try to hide their teleprompters over here or over there or even sometimes right there and make people think that they are extemporaneous of just walking up there, speaking with their own brain and their own thoughts like Sam Dene does. But the governor stood up there and you could obviously tell he was reading the teleprompter. He was sitting right there and was sitting right there. Sometimes you could even see the applause cards being held up and the stand-up, sit-down cards being held up. So I was proud of him for delivering an honest presentation, not trying to deceive the people into thinking he was just making those thoughts up as he went through the evening. But notwithstanding an excellent presentation by the governor, an honest presentation, I have a few things to say about the content of his presentation. I think right off the bat, with considering the horrible situation that our entire city and state and nation are in, the horrible situation, I think it would have been, I would almost demand that he order, that he order the bloated bureaucratic bodies to take some significant pay raises. I've been made aware of some of the salaries, including your own salaries, some of the bloated salaries throughout the bureaucracies in northern Nevada and throughout Nevada. And he should have made an attack on those bloated bureaucratic salaries. The citizens would have loved that. The citizens out there looking for jobs, working for six or eight or 10, $15 an hour. And then you take a look at the bloated salaries that we have throughout the community, at the government bodies, and at a lot of these nonprofit organizations. I'm following, taking a look at some of these nonprofit organizations, mostly government-subsidized, and you look at the bloated salaries at the top and the hard workers, the workers, the grunts down there doing the work, the noble work for these nonprofit organizations, they're making maybe at the best $10 an hour. I was also glad to see that the man that I nominated to replace Senator Roggio, Greg Brower, I nominated Greg Brower, and he was appointed. Sam Dene went to the podium at County Commission last week and nominated Greg Brower, and I'm glad to see that he was there, sitting with Senator Roggio. As a matter of fact, they gave Senator Roggio a plaque yesterday over at the County Commission, and I got up and spoke on his behalf, and Senator Roggio came over and thanked me profusely.
Thank you. Mr. Chuck Walker.
Members of council, City Manager, I didn't intend to speak on item H-2, and since you have withdrawn that, I would still like to make my comments because I believe they're prudent to make at this time, especially on the comments made by the City Attorney. As I read that document, I was troubled that some of the information in that document looked to be inaccurate and some of it was substantially outdated. It was quoting population and demographic figures and employment figures and employers in the 2005 to 2007 timeframe, some of which don't exist anymore. I would encourage you to have staff take a look at that report and put in information which is more current. I know that information is readily available because I've got that information from the Chamber of Commerce and the Nevada Business Review myself, and it's nice to have current information, especially when you have to make long-term planning, and I would encourage you to get that updated before you take action on it. Thank you very much.
Is that something you'd like to pass on to us so we could include it for when we have the presentation?
I could, I could, you know, yellow-line the report. I mean, the one that caught me the most was it was talking about the Flamingo Hilton as one of the major employers in Reno. The Hilton hasn't had a property in Reno for several years. It also uses old census figures. And I think, you know, we now have the current census figures, the census tracts which will be used for reapportionment of the state, and I think it would be more prudent to use those census tracts and that more accurate information because this report does talk about hazard mitigation, and there are different tracts that now have people and that didn't when that last report was made. And that is my concern.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
That's valid, thank you. I don't have any other comment cards. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak at public comment? If you would, come forward, sir, and then identify yourself for the record, please. And then if you'll go to the clerk and sign one.
I filled one out.
You did?
Yeah, she, I filled it out and it was sitting right there.
Is it in public comment or is it?
For public comment, yes.
Go ahead. If you identify yourself and then...
My name's Doug Olson, resident of Reno, Nevada. I'm here to speak out against changing the power purchase agreement on C-10, item C-10 in your agenda. I believe there's three reasons not to change that agreement. The first being that when you guys put out a request for proposal for that agreement to make with there, you had specific points that needed to be met. Ninety-one kilowatt of solar needed to be installed by December 31st. That was not done. So all of the contractors that bid on that job and sent you a request for proposal, if you change what needed to be done, then you should change your request for proposal and put it back out to bid for that first reason. Second reason, I personally don't have, like power purchase agreements. I think that with the rebate money that you could get from NV Energy and by putting out a simple bond, a solar bond, for that people to purchase, you could pay for the interest on the bond with the money that you would save by using the money that you're not going to spend for electricity to pay the revenue for the bond. You could use the bond to fund the rest of the solar systems that you would like to install on your buildings, and you could make Reno completely green, all of the city of Reno. You could do that, I think, if you, if you looked at it that way. That way you could pay for it without having to use other people, or you could use your bond money to pay for whatever Nevada Energy didn't satisfy because they're going to give you an amount if you've applied to those rebates. And then for that, and the third thing is, if you do the power purchase agreement, one of the things that the power purchase agreement doesn't consider is prevailing wage because it's private money on city of Reno property, they don't have to pay prevailing wage and make good jobs for local people. I think if you're going to do and change that, some of the changes you should have would be a prevailing wage provision and that they use local residents or state, at least state and Nevada residents. And the fourth thing is, anybody working on a solar system by OSHA, by the state of Nevada is required to have an OSHA certification or an ISAT, NABSEP certification to work on there, and I think that your, that your inspectors should check that.
Okay, thank you. And they did find your sheet.
Woo-hoo!
It was under consent agenda. This is under public comment, but it's okay. We got your point.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Brandy Anderson. Thanks for letting me come and address you. I was hoping the mayor would be here, but thank you to the City Council members and Ms. Dreska. I'm going to read the statement because if I just went ahead and like free-spoke, I would definitely wouldn't make it in my three minutes. I just wanted to take some time today to share a story and say thank you to this council, to Ms. Dreska's staff, and the many other incredible people that you employ in your public safety departments. As some of you know, our six-year-old son Cooper was diagnosed with acute lymphocytic leukemia on October 15th of last year. Our lives have since been a whirlwind of shock, fear, hope, change, and gratefulness. To say, to say that having a child with cancer is devastating is a gross understatement. But for my family, I'm here to thank you and your incredible fire family for making our journey less devastating. I'm sorry. I'm here to tell you that you employ some of the most selfless, kind, and generous men and women in your fire department. From the moment the word was out that our son's diagnosis, these men and women organized, sacrificed, and volunteered to make sure Joe and I knew that we would be okay. People volunteered to cover my husband's shifts while we were in Oakland at the Children's Hospital for 12 days. They raised money to help with our unexpected travel and lodging costs and even created Team Coop t-shirts that were sold to help with future travel and medical bills. We were stunned and comforted to know that we know some of the greatest people in the world, and they are your employees. Joe and I wish to thank you and council members and your city staff for offering your employees the opportunity to pay a fair price for our incredible insurance plan. Joe and I have always been grateful for the opportunity to have access to great health care at a fair price, but I cannot describe to you what an amazing difference it has been to our family around Cooper's diagnosis. If city leadership didn't find it valuable to offer their employees the opportunity to purchase the insurance options that you do, our family would be financially devastated. I want to take this opportunity to tell you how amazing CDS has been for us. They've created a unique plan for our son to streamline his care, which saves them money and improves the conditions for Coop's treatments. They allow him to visit the facility in Reno where he can see his pediatric oncologist from Oakland without traveling and have been incredibly helpful and responsive when we have questions about anything. I know that in economic times like these, when budgets are dwindling and there are tough sacrifices being asked of your employees and the public, it may seem as if benefits like a good health care plan may go unappreciated. I just want you to know that this benefit has enabled the Anderson family to bravely help our son fight his cancer, know that he is receiving incredible care, and provide the peace of mind that his diagnosis won't devastate a family's finances who have worked long and honest careers in our community. I know you are being forced to consider some devastating cuts to balance this and next year's budget, and I wish you the best in those decisions that you'll have to make. I have left you, can I finish really quick? Do you guys mind?
Go ahead.
Really quick? I have left you all with Team Coop t-shirts, not that I expect you to wear them, but to help remind you what a blessing and life-changing benefit and that line item on your budget sheet can represent in the lives of your employees and your community and your economy. You didn't know it before, but you're all part of Team Coop, and our family is grateful. Again, I just want to publicly thank all of the incredible men and women in the Reno Fire Department that have helped insulate our family and our son from this potential devastation of this disease. Joe and I promise we will pay back your sacrifices and generosity for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm shaking, but I didn't actually cry. But thank you. Thanks.
And best wishes to your son, obviously. I have no other cards, so I'll close the public comment section. Moving ahead to item B, the cash disbursements. We have a motion to approve, a second? Motion and second? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that council people want to look at? Councilman Dorch? C-10? C-10?
C-3 as well.
Okay, thank you. And we do have, remember the public wishes to speak on the consent agenda? Mr. Dene?
Sam Dene, Encyclopedia Reno Government. And this looks pretty much like a mundane consent agenda, as it should be. Consent agenda for the folks out in TV land is designed to get rid of, to do away with housekeeping items, although there are a couple of items on here that pique my interest. The C-9 applying for a grant to help out the rapid rehousing program. And I sit around and have coffee and maybe even have a beer in the evening with friends and we just, always with a designated driver, by the way, but when I have the beer. But the, we talk about the housing and the people over in Tent City and the homeless people that you see all over the place, and then we drive around and we see all of these empty buildings all over the place. And I know it's not as simple as it sounds just to move them in there. There's a lot of other ramification, insurance, heating, and this and whatever else, but it just seems like with all, as the young lady said here, with all the brilliant workers we have working at City Hall, that somebody could come up with an idea how to take those people out of Tent City and put them in one or two or three of the empty buildings that we have permeating this community, including a few floors of this City Hall building, for that matter. And anyway, I think somebody could come up with a way to handle that. Secondly...
You've got a three-bedroom house, don't you, Sam?
What's that?
You've got a three-bedroom, don't you?
And what's your point? People are living in the house.
Take a couple in.
How do you know I don't?
I know. I know.
Actually, I've got three pit bulls in there, and I've invited people over, and they don't like to come in with all my pit bulls hanging out around the house for some reason. I don't know why. They're very nice pit bulls. Maybe it's their reputation. The second thing I was going to talk about was what the gentleman talked about before on this, on the amendment of the, for the Nevada Solar Works job that they got from you folks for solar heating and that sort of thing. And I noticed you have the amounts on, the financial amounts on several items, but it doesn't say what the amendment amount is for this, for this basic change order to this contract you gave the folks a while back. The gentleman back there explained it rather well, and a little while ago, you gave these folks this program, and I was in favor of it. I think I even spoke in favor of it. But then again, to find out they bid for this thing, and now here we are within a few months, and they're going to have an amendment to it. It seems like you should go back to square one and let some of the other folks at least become part of this program, if not take over the program. I'm not, again, I'm not speaking against this amendment, and I'm not speaking against Nevada Solar Works, but it just seems like this should have all been taken care of in the original program that you offered these folks, and if not, then you should be taking care of it now and including these other folks.
And Sam, if you want to see something uplifting about housing, go by 195 Gentry Way, which is in your, close to your neighborhood. They had ribbon cutting yesterday. They have 43 units there. They're going to house over 100 people from, our staff worked on the funds to get that, help that be built for low-income housing. I think you'll be encouraged by what's happening.
Right, and I've seen it. I know where you're talking about, and I wondered what was going to happen there. Are they going to be living there for free or going to have heavy-duty subsidizing?
No, it's low-income housing, but go by and take a look.
Oh, no, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful, it's right across from that, the street from that new school, I think, or fairly new school. But anyway, that's a good start. Are the Tent City people going to be moving in there?
Well, people that qualify are going to be moving in there. Okay, we have two agenda items pulled. The other agenda items, would we move to approve those? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's move to, in order, to C-10. Councilman Dorch?
Yeah, just had some questions for staff on this one. Jason, there were credits that we were supposed to take advantage of by the end of 2010 on certain projects. Did we get to take advantage of those?
Jason Geddes, Environmental Services Administrator. There were certain rebates that were set to expire at the end of 2010, and the vendor, Clean Path, was able to negotiate with NV Energy an extension of those rebates, so we still have those eligible in this program.
So we didn't lose anything?
We did not.
What was the reason? I mean, that was a big debate that we had here on them being able to get that project done by the end of the year, and actually, I mean, that was why we, part of the reason why we awarded the contract to this vendor.
You're correct, sir. Those rebates that we were issued by NV Energy had an expiration date of December, and we were moving forward to try and get those projects done so that we would not be losing those rebates. When the tax bill came up for an issue and the tax credits that were set to expire at the end of the year, the issuance of the power purchase agreement financing that was in the contract you approved and was contingent, that financing kind of froze a little bit. Basically, they weren't lending the money needed to move the PPA forward. So the vendor went down and negotiated with NV Energy if they could extend the deadlines of those rebates, and NV Energy did agree to that.
So has any of the project been started at all?
Not yet.
How far along were we supposed to be by now?
Well, I'm sorry, let me correct that. We, the final design has been done, and part of what you're getting here today is a result of them going out to each of the sites, doing a due diligence, doing a redesign based on utilities that are there, system rules that NV Energy and the PUC has in place, and various things that change the overall design.
How far along were we supposed to be by now?
We were supposed to have started construction in early December to get those first two projects done and complete. They're still on their timeline to meet the May 31st to complete all the projects.
And then the original size of the megawatts proposed?
The original size was 1.4 megawatts.
And what is it now?
It is just over 1 megawatt.
And, and how is, how does that compare with these changes that we're making? Because we're also asking to decrease, or we're actually asked to change the rate, correct?
Yeah, we're decreasing the rate from seven and a half cents kilowatt-hour to 6.9 kilowatt, cents per kilowatt-hour. And part of that change was to make sure that we still had a positive cash flow to the city based on the reconfiguration of some of these systems. Some of them had to be reconfigured based on physical constraints, but the biggest one out at Stead had to be downsized based on conflicting Nevada regulatory statute language. In one area, it allows us to build to a megawatt. In a different section, it caps it at the demand size class of your facility, and we went into negotiations with NV Energy on that. There's, there's just different interpretations of that, and being able to finance with that uncertainty made it a bit of an issue. So we did lower the price. The system size had to go smaller. They lowered the price so that we could ensure we had positive cash flow throughout.
And then is the escalator changed at all?
The escalator is still 2%.
Okay. And then how does, how does the overall package now compare to the original package we approved with these changes?
It's basically that system size is down, and bulk of that being at Stead became a smaller project.
Okay. And then how does that compare to the other bids that were proposed? I mean, we, we had several other bids at the time, and with these changes, we're not getting what we thought we were getting at the time. I mean, so how does this, how does this compare to the other bids that were proposed at the time?
We went back and did that analysis on what the other bids would have come out like in the same situation, if they had the same demand class. One of the other bids, you know, only bid at Stead, and that was their only project, and it would have taken their project size in half. And when we redid that financial analysis that we gave you with the constraints that have been put on us by NV Energy, the PUC, and the demand classes, it still came out with the same ranking that we provided to you when you awarded the original contract.
So what options do we have at this point? Do we have to move forward with these guys? Are we, are we locked into this?
We, we do have a contract with them to move forward on this project.
But if we didn't, if we didn't make the changes that, that you're requesting us to make, then what happens?
Then Susan Valroth, Deputy City Attorney, then the original agreement and addendums that you have already approved stay in place. This benefits you because it addresses the price adjustment. But, and with regard to the original RFP, it wasn't solely based upon one factor. It was based upon numerous factors that were evaluated and ranked, and we're not changing the basis of how it was evaluated and brought forward to you.
Well, but, but the bottom line is, it was, I mean, there were projects that were supposed to already be completed, and they're not completed. And that was a concern that this council had at the time on whether or not those projects could be done by this company.
I would have to go back and look at all the original documents as to the remedies available, if you still want to pursue that.
We'll take that up in a second. Councilman Sforazza?
Couple of questions, and it was brought up during public comment, Jason. Is this something that we could do on our own without a third party? I mean, we had that suggestion under public comment. Is that possible? I mean, getting rid of the middleman?
It was an option that we looked at originally when we went out to RFP, and the basic difference is we don't have the financing and the incremental cost from the rebates to the cost of the system. As the gentleman alluded to, we would either have to have general fund money or issue a bond to cover that difference, and neither of those revenue streams were available to us. And with this power purchase agreement coming in under what we were paying, it was a positive cash flow for us without having to come out of the general fund or bonding capacity.
But, but isn't it similar to what we did with the Krebs financing in the sense that if we were to do it, then the savings from the energy costs, couldn't we bond, just like we had done on the other agreements?
It would be a possibility. We do not have any of those bonding revenues available at this point in time. We applied for more clean and renewable energy bonds to do more solar projects, and we were denied by the federal government in their application process. We did apply in that route, and we were denied that. And just, we did bring these forward. We did put those clauses in the contract that would come back to you. We are coming in with a lower price, but these are constraints in the contract that are really no fault of the contractor. The contractor is still committed to get all of the work done by May 31st. The December deadline that was the critical issue we were pushing on was based on those rebates, and the vendor has successfully negotiated with NV Energy that those will not expire as long as we complete the full project. So they are motivated to get that project work done, and we firmly believe that they still can.
But Jason, I agree with Councilman Dorch. I remember this discussion. We had, I think, three different vendors in the audience. They said September, I mean, September, that they were going to start, I believe, on the Neal Road Project and the Evelyn Mount Center, that they were going to start doing these things, and to me, they haven't performed under the contract that we approved. Secondly, I think to address the public comment, what is the issue, Jason, with the prevailing wage on this? Because we did stipulate, just so you know, in the contract, that it has to be a local workforce from Washoe County when we approved this. So that is in the, this contract, just so, you know, Doug. So, that is in this contract, just so, you know, Doug. What is the issue on the prevailing wage, Jason?
And you approved the awarding of the contract in August. We brought the contract back to you in October for approval to move forward in the first week of December. We are in the middle of January. To address those issues, prevailing wage is a requirement of the contract, and they will meet the prevailing wage requirements. This council did put in the local hiring requirement, and that is in the contract and will be held to. There, the other point he had, there was...
That was Washoe County too, correct?
Correct.
Within Washoe County?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's to be validated through the process and reported back to council quarterly.
And then, the other question is on the size, Jason. Can you explain that to me a little bit because of the system? I mean, is it really a decrease in energy savings going with a smaller system?
It's an overall decrease in energy savings going to that system. The conflict we run into is there's a section of Nevada revised statutes that defines what a net metering system is, and when you're looking at the size of a net metering system and you're net metering out over the year, you can build up to how much you use on a kilowatt-hour basis through the year. But in the general Public Utility Commission statutes, when they define a utility and they define what isn't a utility, which in essence is what we are when we're backing out of NV Energy's, they state that it's based on the demand class of a system. So, there's actually two sections of NRS, and Legislative Council Bureau agrees that those are in conflict, and we've, there's some legislators working to correct it this session. But basically, it was built on the assumption of a net metering system, which is correct in NRS. But this other one that threw it into doubt is what created, basically, the main one, which was Stead going from 964 to 500, which caused us going down from the 1.4 to the 1 megawatt.
So, explain to me how this works out in the schedule then on the pricing?
On the pricing, we would still put in the systems. They would all be completed by May 31st. Once a system is installed and NV Energy turns on the net metering agreement and flips the switch, then we would start paying the 6.9 cent per kilowatt-hour rate for that facility, for the energy we're getting from those solar facilities. And then, whatever we're not getting from them, we'll continue to pay NV Energy at their rate.
And then, it was, before that, it was what, .76?
It was 7.5 cents a kilowatt-hour, and this drops it to 6.9 cents.
With the 2%?
With the 2% escalator, still in there. And then, the buyout charges based on that and the 20-year price schedules are all in there for each of the sites as well, and have been adjusted to that drop from 7.5 to 6.9 with the 2% escalator.
And then, one last question, again, I guess, want to make sure on this. Doing it on our own, there's no other way for the city to be able to do it, because right now, they're up fronting the cost for the infrastructure. So, that's the biggest issue we have. And without the CRB's, there isn't another way we could do it on our own?
We could do it through straight municipal financing or a general fund appropriation for the balance of the system, if we had that available to us.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Ozzy?
Yeah, Jason, on the October 10th report, you gave us a chart for how much the savings would be. What are they now, the savings to the city?
Sorry, I should have had that with me. We recalculated it downward based on the overall system size, and it was, I believe it ended up being 1.4 million over the 20-year system based on a 6.9 and a calculated differential.
I'm trying to find it again, where it was, because it was like up to 7 million, right?
It was 2.2 million was the savings back in October when we did a 7.5, and we did a cost comparison to the average rate that we were paying for all of our facilities at 11.5. But when we redid this calculation, we redid it based on the lowest possible rate, which is our time-of-use GS2, and we applied that to all the facilities, although several of our facilities are at the GS1 rate. So, we took that down, and then we also took in the future anticipated deferred energy adjustments, but we didn't put in the approved NV Energy general rate adjustment. So, we tried to scale back all of the numbers to be even more conservative than our October projections.
In October, it said the 20-year savings would be 2.8 million to the city of Reno, and now it's 1.4.
Correct.
So, for $1.4 million, shouldn't I wait and see if the legislature can fix this problem?
It is an option if you wanted to do that. I'm not sure the legislature would move in a positive direction or a negative direction on the rebates.
Well, we're taking the negative position stance, though, right? With this contract, we're saying the worst that is in the law, that's what we will do. So, how could it get worse for us?
If they change the rebate program and they eliminate the rebates the way that they're currently set, or if they reset the rebate level lower than the $5 per watt rate that we are currently sitting at, a couple of the proposals that are in the legislature, one through the Solar Alliance, is to lower the rebate that we would get down into the $2.50 to $3 range versus the $5 rebates we currently have.
Would that be retroactive on the current rebates that we have? We got the extension on?
With the law change that they did in the last session, they pay the rebate at the rebate level you have when the system is turned on. So, if they change that rebate level in the legislature July 1, and we went out and did the system waiting on that, come July 1, if we got a rebate, our level could be down to the $2.50 or the rebates that we currently have, they would pay out at whatever that rebate level is. So, there is a risk there.
So, I guess I have a legal question. What's their responsibility to follow through on what they told us they would do? I mean, we signed a contract with them. They said they would build something in, and they said we would save $2.2 million, $2.8 million.
Deputy City Attorney Susan Ballroth, I would need to review the liability and remedies on both sides of the contract. One, as indicated, the fact that they can't complete, is, they can't still complete within the contract deadline. And with regard to the cost savings, again, it appears, but not to be their fault, but I do need to review.
But certainly isn't our fault.
And, and correct.
Don't they have some responsibility to check state law?
Yes.
So, I guess I'm wondering why staff would recommend we approve this?
Jason Geddes, Environmental Services Administrator. I still firmly believe it is a good deal for the city of Reno to generate as much as we can in solar electricity under your green priority at a lower rate than we are getting from the utility. And that $1.4 or 1.4 million savings was based on a lower rate, as I mentioned, the GS time-of-use 2. If we compared it to the 11.5 that we compared it to previously, then you would see a greater savings by going from the seven and a half to a 6.9, although it is a smaller system size.
Let me ask this on their side. Is their profit the same?
I would have to defer to them.
I mean, I'm wondering if they're taking a 50% cut in profit, which is what we're doing. Well, come on up.
And I will say, we have decreased the size of the Stead system to get into where we're in compliance in those conflicting statutes. And if they do change that, if we do get the law changed, we can upsize that system.
Tom, excuse me, Tom Price on behalf of Nevada Solar Works. The short answer is yes, we are taking a pretty significant haircut. When you make a project smaller, the overall numbers go down. We also chose to, when we realized that the system size was going to have to be smaller, unilaterally offered to lower the PPA price so that the savings for the city could be preserved at as high a level as possible. There's nothing in the contract that requires a change in the PPA price it's set, but the goal was in part to save the city money, and since the project is going to be smaller and some other factors changed, we felt like we could move that number and still preserve as many of those savings as possible.
Tom, I'm getting 28% less solar, and I'm only getting an 8% reduction in my price.
8%?
From 7.5 to 6.9 is an 8% savings.
I'm not good at math on the fly right now.
.6 divided by 7.5.
I'll take your word for it, okay. We also, by the way, we ended up, and this wasn't stipulated in the previous contract, several of the facilities, the initial guidance that we received from city employees regarding the location and configuration of the arrays, turned out, when we talked to other people that they worked with, not to be ideal. So, we ended up changing five of them to improve them in the form of, instead of putting them on the ground or on a roof of a building, actually making elevated shade structures, for example, at Neal Road and at the Corporation Yard and at Fire Station 10, they'll now have elevated carport shade structures that people can park underneath, as opposed to something hanging on the side of a building or on the roof, which may cause issues. So, we've got all of the systems now off of the roof. There's none of them on the ground. They're all either, in the case of Stead, in a field by itself, or in a large majority of the cases, they now have an elevated shade component. There was one fire station, I recall, that although the ground mount location was fine for solar, the employees of that fire station installed a lot of landscaping and so on and so forth, and we worked to figure out a way to move that array so that instead of tearing up the zero scapeing they'd done, it would be an elevated carport shade structure.
My last question is something that Jason said, is because of these conflicting state laws, you couldn't get financing? Because my other question is, why don't we just go to what the state law that gives us the maximum? Why don't we just go to the one part of the state law that says you can do this? Why don't we just do that?
Jason Geddes, Environmental Services Administrator. We became concerned with that, that if we went forward on that positive motion, and we talked to NV Energy and it was out there, that there was the chance that a large portion of the system would be invalidated, and we wouldn't be able to use that solar array, and we'd have to pull it out.
Who would invalidate it?
The Public Utility Commission or NV Energy wouldn't connect it based on that section of the Nevada revised statute. They wouldn't put it into the net metering agreement because the overall size of the system would violate that one section based on demand class.
So, we got from them that they absolutely would not turn it on, or they're going to wait for us to build it, and then they would decide?
We got, we will put it into the final agreement once you connect, that we will be able to do that.
But they won't tell us that upfront?
Correct.
I think we need them here.
Any other questions? I have, I have two questions, and if I may ask the gentleman from Nevada Solar Works, because we did discuss this at the time, and you stepped forward. I remember there were some impressive people speaking on your behalf as to, on your company about following through. So, I want to ask you this question that rumors fly, and nobody knows what's factual, so you're the man who can answer this. Are you going to continue to own and operate it, or are you looking for someone as a subcontractor at this point?
There will be an outside company that does operations and maintenance service. Nevada Solar Works is going to continue to own and operate the system. That's part of the contract. And was there another part of the question?
No, that's part of it. I just, because you're not subcontracting this, the service out to somebody else.
No.
Okay. And then, I guess either, either of you could ask this. The other comment in prevailing wage was taken care of, but the public comment also came about certification. Jason, is that something your department will be checking, that the people that are working on are certified, or how do we, how do we get to the bottom line there, that everybody working there has the certification they need to have?
It's the Labor Commission issues the OSHA PV installers license, and the Labor Commission is responsible for certifying that. The other standard that was mentioned, which is NABSEP, is kind of a gold standard. It's not a requirement in the state, but it is a good indication of quality, and the people that we're working with do have NABSEP certification.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Councilman Zadra?
Actually, Sue, this may be for you. And it's pretty much what we've already expressed to you. We need to hear the consequences and the opportunities that are available within that contract. I would agree with you, and as it's been stated by both staff and the vendor, it wasn't necessarily their fault that this occurred, but I absolutely do believe that as our contractor, they have the responsibility for securing all information before submitting and proceeding with the job. So, I think it's pretty clear we're going to be continuing any kind of decision on this today. And I see this as being a significant change, which is usually what we hear from our legal staff, a significant change that requires us starting all over. So, you need to hear that as an expectation of what I will expect to hear from you.
Susan Ballroth, Deputy City Attorney, certainly understand, I don't view it as a significant change, but I certainly will look at, review thoroughly all the contracts, because there's the PPA and there's the contract, and the leases with regard to the remedies and responsibilities and liabilities on both sides, because you need to know both sides.
I just have, the public comment has been closed, but I did get a public comment sheet, and I wanted to ask if I can ask a question on your behalf, Mr. Walker. I can't read the last word. It says, what is the effect on overall energy pro forma? Is that what it is?
Yes, sir. The Jason and John...
Just, you need to come forward, just so we can have it on the record, but that the public comment is passed, but in all fairness and...
Yeah, Jason and John made an excellent presentation to the last Financial Advisory Board on the integration of this program with the other energy savings programs and the upgrading of the entire city's energy system. And a lot of the expenses that are being used to replace things in other parts of the system are based upon the savings that will come from this program. And my question is, based upon the fact that we are going to have a reduced amount of savings from this program that will be usable, how does that affect these other programs that we have, and do we still have the money to do them? Because I think they're great programs.
The last word is program, then. Okay, that's what I couldn't read. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason Geddes, Environmental Services Administrator. It's the pro forma, and none of this project is part of that project. We did this one entirely outside of the scope, so none of the savings derived from this power purchase agreement are used in the financing of any of the energy retrofit or solar or wind projects that we are currently doing. This one is entirely outside, so any savings to the city from utility bills generated from this would stay in the general fund.
It's standalone, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I, not sure where the council's going. I apologize again for this coming forward. I could recalculate those numbers. Again, as I mentioned, on the, we lowered the rate from seven and a half cents to 6.9 cents. I don't think any of the vendors or this vendor could build based on that ambiguity in the Nevada revised statutes. But to the full system size that we originally wanted, we are still talking about a megawatt of solar for the city at 6.9 cents kilowatt-hour, 2% escalator, which is below what we're paying NV Energy and will be for the term of the contract, I firmly believe. I could rerun the numbers on the estimate to the total savings of the city, because instead of, as I mentioned, instead of using a seven and a half comparison to the 11 and a half average we're paying, we dropped it down to the 6.9 cents, and then we compared it down to more of an eight and a half cent blended GS2 rate. So, if I reran it at the 11 and a half, even with a smaller system, you would see larger numbers. And when I recalculated all of the finalist vendors with all the same criteria and constraints, the ranking still came out the same as we brought you in August and in the contract in October. So, I still honestly believe this is the best deal for the city, the best deal we can move forward with, the least risk, and the best options as far as offsetting our future energy costs and savings to the city. And I recommend wholeheartedly you support it here today.
Thank you. Councilman Heskey, did you have a question?
Jason, on the, is this whole issue basically just goes away if you get a determination upfront from the PUC and NV Energy, that they would hook up the system as originally planned, right? I mean, that's the ambiguity that you're concerned about and why you had to scale back?
That is a big part of the ambiguity, and I think getting that certainty going into a legislative session was something that is difficult to predict.
Okay. So, we don't have, it's not a matter of going to both those entities and getting some kind of advisory opinion or some advance, some advance ruling that we can go ahead and that they'll hook it up, and we can go back to this contract as originally planned?
I don't believe so. We went and met with NV Energy twice on the issue and discussed the issue through in a couple of meetings, as well as consulted the PUCN staff and the LCB staff. They agreed that the conflict was there. They agreed it shouldn't be there, that we should, we should have been able to build at that size, but until we actually got a Nevada revised statute change confirming that... Nevada Revised Statute change confirming that, there, there is uncertainty and doubt in that. I mean, if we, we could wait until the legislative session finished, see if they did make that change, to clear up that section, and then go back out and start the project again, but that would go concurrent with any revamps to the rebate program and rebate levels that could drop and blow the $5 what we're currently getting.
Understood. I was just thinking, is there a way like we've done with LCB, in other venues, that we get some, or really, the Attorney General's Office to get an opinion from them that basically says they can resolve the conflict, and ultimately, we can go ahead and hook it up, they would hook it up, even though the conflict exists, even though there may be a change to the statute, the change would basically clarify what we all think is the case, which really, the conflict is resolved in our favor.
And we, we were pursuing down that path, and what the agreement was from them was that they would put it in the NV Energy net metering agreement, once we connected the system, and not in advance. That's what we got from them.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. I think we've gotten some pretty good information, and good questions exploratory about what we should do, and it seems to me that it's, if you want to go one in the hand, it's worth whatever is in the bush. I've heard both sides of that, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, so... This agenda item was pulled by two council people, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Sfrazet.
Yeah, I gotta be honest, I'm, I'm very concerned about it. I think when you're entering into a contract for 20 years, I disagree with the attorneys, it is a substantial change. You're talking about going from 2.8 million to 1.4. I would like to get some more answers on the public record. I mean, this isn't just a contract we're going into for three years, it's a 20-year contract, I don't think we have all the information in front of us today. And I would like to hear from people on the record, before we move forward with this, to see if there's a way we could work it out, a bigger system, maybe I'm willing to take the risk during the legislative session. They all said that renewable energy is a top priority of theirs, was in the governor's speech. I, I think if we're going to be putting in the infrastructure for 20 years, it's got to be the, the proper infrastructure, so...
As long as we understand the risks going forward. Councilwoman Zadra, you also wanted this item for further discussion?
I still have enough questions that I, I would prefer that it is continued, and that we address, you and legal, address each of the questions and concerns that we've brought to you. I wouldn't be comfortable making a decision today.
Councilman George?
Yeah, Jason, I mean, help me out here on, a little bit on the savings. You used a different number to compare that to, also. So, the 2.8 wouldn't even be valid under the new way you compared this, right?
That is correct, sir.
It'd be much less than that.
Uh, it would actually...
You said you based, originally you based it on 12 cents?
We compared seven and a half cents to 11 and a half cents, which is our blended rate, and in this comparison, we compared 6.9 cents to eight and a half cents. So, there is that three cents per kilowatt lower on what the NV Energy side of the docket would be. So, we, we just tried to be even more conservative in projecting what the overall savings of the contract would be. If we rerun it with the various numbers, it will go up and down. If I compared it to the original 11.5, our blended, our current blended rate, it would show above 2 million, but not quite the 2.8.
Right, because I mean, the way I look at it, we really only had a 28% reduction in, in energy, so our savings should be, I would think, similar, especially since the fact that we did lower the rate by 8%.
Yeah, it, it's mainly that comparison that we did on the projections, to make sure we were going underneath the lowest rate, and not the blended rate.
If I have less, less solar panels out there, I save less money. That's the problem.
That's what I mean, you have 28% less output, but you've lowered the rate by 8%. And that's why I couldn't get, I mean, why would we, why would we have 50% reduction in savings, if we only have 28% less energy, and we've actually lowered the rate we're paying?
Because we, in the comparison, we just went more conservative, and went to a lower rate in the comparison. If I did a straight calculation based on the numbers we presented in October, you would have, you would get a different number.
And maybe that's what we should see, is that side by side. This is what, you know, based upon the calculation you did back then, this is what the savings would have been, and this is what the savings would be, using the current calculations, on both, what was originally, what we originally bought into, and what we're seeing today.
Councilman Heskey?
Yeah, for me, NV Energy's been our partner a lot of things, and I think we should have a letter from them, or someone here at the next meeting, to tell us, A, I mean, yeah, we'll hook it up with what we said we'd do, we'll take this part of the state law, and we'll, we'll write a letter to the PUC recommending that they would agree with this, or no, we're not going to give you an answer right now, we're going to wait, which is, then I'll have a problem with them, or tell us no. You know, one way or the other, I think they're the ones in the room, or they're not in the room, that should be here to tell me why I should be reducing by 30%, because we're afraid of a lawsuit or something. So, we're taking NV Energy's side right off the bat. There's no reason they cannot give us an answer right now what they would support at the PUC level, no reason whatsoever, in my mind. And I'd like to have them here on the 9th.
And, and NV Energy did agree with the position and the way we interpreted it, but they, they wouldn't go out there without a PUC ruling and the NRAS law change, but I will definitely have them here.
And we all know they have a lot of sway over the PUC. If they make a recommendation, say, "We know that there's a problem here, on this one, we want to go with the bigger one", then the state can change the law, you guys fix that, but every, people seem to get grandfathered in all the time, and we never want to take advantage of that. We always want to be babies about it.
And I will, in continuing to the 9th, I can go and get all the information you requested today. If you consider throwing this out entirely, and going back out and going to the legislature, there is about 2 million of, of the 4 million rebates that will go away, because they were in the old program that was rethought by the last legislature.
Yeah, that's not what we're asking, we're asking for a continuance, I think, of what I'm hearing, consensus on the councils, continuance to the 9th, and make the ultimate decision then. So, if we can have a motion to that effect?
And just one more footnote, do you think you can get somebody here from the PUC? I mean, I'd like to know what are, what the probability is of them basically turning this upside down, pending, you know, statutory, statutory change. Because they do, I thought they gave out administrative rulings, which might benefit us.
I will make that request, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Zadra to continue this, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Iasi. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's move to Agenda Item C3, Councilwoman Sfrazet.
Yeah, on this one, this was required by the NDEP. My question is, where are we actually drilling the wells? Is it in front of people's houses? I'm, because this affects my ward, so I wanted to know where we're actually going to be drilling.
Good afternoon. Ryan Byrd, Environmental Services Supervisor.
And we're required to do this, correct?
Correct. Let me see if I can... We're drilling these actually in the roadway, next to Yori and Kazaza. We have one, we have one in Yori and Kazaza, right in the street, adjacent to the sidewalk. We have two others right in Capitol Hill, and that is the extent of this process that we're asking you to approve today.
Okay, is that, had the streets been reconstructed over there? I thought Yori was just done.
I, I don't have the answer to that, we can certainly review that. What they're being requested is just to install these wells, it would be minimal disruption to the surface of the roadway. These would, they, they kind of look like a water valve can, when they're completed, and so it'd just be drilling that well in there, so they can use it for the monitoring purposes, that's, that's the extent of what we'd be looking at.
And then they're covered up, is it temporarily covered up? I mean...
Again, they'll, they have a, the valve, like I said, almost like a water valve, the way it looks in the roadway, and it says "Monitoring Well" on it, and again, it's, it's strictly used to access, just for the monitoring of getting the samples.
So, and this is for PCE contamination?
For the record, Ryan Byrd, Environmental Services Supervisor, that is correct?
And so, in the staff report, it talks about how we were originally looking at going on the subject property, I believe in old dry cleaners, was what was stated?
That is correct. What we, the city asked the consultant and the property owner to do, is do their due diligence, and look at other properties adjacent to the plume that they have defined with NDEP, and none of the property owners were actually willing to let a drill rig pull up in the back of their yard, or front of the yard, and sink holes. So, we were the last resort, in which, and that's why we have the agreement, that to drill these three wells in our roadway, it just makes sense.
So, what happens if we find PCE?
Well, if we find PCE, then there will probably be some additional testing, and depending on the results of the PCE, we'll come up with some way to either pull that out of the soil, or make that decision some subsequent time down the road.
Do we determine the source?
I, I think that's what the point of this exercise is all about. I think the source is somewhat defined in that Plum Lane Plaza, and I think that the exercise that we're trying to do here is just define the outskirts of that plume, as how far it went.
Okay.
Councilman Iasi?
Yeah, why, I'm curious why we're handling this, and not the county who has a whole fund to work on PCE.
We're not actually handling this, we're just authorizing the consultant and the property owner to go in the roadway, but the NDEP is actually handling this and overseeing this?
And then, I guess, my obvious question is, is it the people don't want to let them drill in their property, or they want to charge them and they don't want to pay?
I can't speak to that's why.
I wonder why we wouldn't charge them?
That question did come up, we have well-licensed agreements with Washoe County, we have remediation projects with other people, and to date, we've never charged for a remediation project.
This is just a monitoring, there's no remediation here now.
Correct. We have similar license agreements in which we have not charged. I actually asked that question with the City of Sparks a couple of years ago, and they don't charge as well.
And who does the monitoring? Is it...
The consultant on behalf of NDEP corrective action.
And who actually is this for, for them to do what? What's, what's the, what are we doing here?
We, the city, aren't actually doing anything. The, the consultant is going to assess the PCE on behalf of the Plum Lane Plaza, to essentially clean this up someday, at some point in time.
I mean, what, what happened? They came and they identified that there's a possible plume, and they told them that they had to try to fix it, or what?
That's correct.
Or what happens, if they don't?
Well, if they, if they don't, I would assume that they would be under some enforcement action through the state of Nevada, through, through fines, through imprisonment, whatever the extent of the law would...
So, this isn't part of a new construction project, it's something that was old?
Correct.
Any further questions?
I guess, still, again, for clarification, if they're causing the issue, why wouldn't they be required by the state to test on their property? I mean, why are we going out in the city's ride-a-way? That's where I'm...
I would say they probably have to identify the extent of it.
That's exactly the point, I mean, because they got to find out, we probably, pretty much know, I mean, this is pretty much standard practice, that they know who the potentially responsible persons are, before they can assess and require them to remediate and clean it up, they got to know the extent of the damage.
That's true.
I mean, I can give you examples of gas stations up at Lake Tahoe, where I had an actual client, that they put a monitoring well on their property, to see how, how long that, that plume actually made it to the adjacent properties, so they could go after the, the bad guys.
Okay.
I think your assessment is correct.
That makes sense. All right, move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's move forward to our public hearings, F1. Madam Clerk, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
F1 is the request for a master plan amendment on Amber Meadows. Counsel wish to handle this in expedited manner? Councilman George?
Second.
We have a motion, second, further comments?
Just one clarification, we're actually reducing the zoning from the 14 to the 3.
Three to 21 is moved, three to 21.
What we're doing here is we're taking it back to the SF6.
Would you identify it yourself, excuse me?
Oh, sorry. For the record, Steve Morton with Summit Engineering, what we're doing is eventually, we'll come forward with a zoning map amendment, we'll take it back to SF6, which on this 64 acres, will take it down to around 3.5 dwelling units to the acre.
So, and, and that's because there's not the infrastructure in place to support the higher zoning? Is that the rationale?
Correct, right, right now, on phase one, they final mapped 114 lots for phase one of Amber Meadows, and they installed all the infrastructure in there, and right now, the capacity is for 339 units, so basically, the 114 platted lots, and then the remaining 225.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item F11, resolution.
Resolution number 7550, case number LDC 1100019, Amber Meadows. Resolution to amend resolution number 5673 by adopting a change to land use plan of the Reno Master Plan, as approved in case number LDC 1100019.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item F2, the military road abandonment, madam clerk, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, and no correspondence was received.
Wish to handle this in... You're back again?
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney, yes you are, we're moving forward. We, we request that you abandon this portion of the military road, called the abandoned military road portion, subject to staff's recommendations.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. F3, Damone Ranch Village 20, madam clerk, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, and we've received one email in opposition.
You received one email?
In opposition.
And that's been put in the record?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Zadra?
Based on compliance with the applicable findings, move to approve.
A motion and a second, further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no ordinance system today, so let's move to resolutions, H1.
Resolution number 7551, resolution for budget augmentations and approval of budget revisions, July 1st, 2010 through December 31st, 2010.
Questions?
Several questions, yeah. In our CAFER report last week that was given to the council, there were several areas, one of the highlights in that CAFER was that there were intergovernmental transfers made without council approval. In just going through this resolution, there were several things that I think were highlighted here that I have questions on. For example, on the city manager executive budget...
What page are you on?
On page 190, and, madam manager, this may be just positions that you transferred under yours, but it increased 513,000, wanted to know why that was.
And actually, that question was asked of me, mayor members of council, was asked of me, as I, as I came in and had the, the opportunity to talk with, with staff, and that was, in fact, the redistribution and some restructuring of the organization and moving individuals in, so you would see a comparable decrease elsewhere.
Okay, so, where would that decrease? That's what I'm looking for, where is the decrease in what budget?
You should see a decrease out of the finance department, I believe, and I'm not sure if it came out of organizational development this past year, or a year prior. Magala's coming forward, so she can identi, identify. As you recall, we, we created what was called the Office of Management and Budget, and moved budget into the, into the manager's office, to have the complement of having a finance department and a budget department division.
Magala Emery, Office of Budget and Management, the decrease is going to be in the finance department, and in community development, because we had an assistant city manager and a senior management analyst charged to community development that was under the city manager, so we took this opportunity to consolidate all of that under the city manager's budget.
Okay, so, I see it now, so the finance, 410, and then you've got the, the community development also went down as well.
Correct.
And then, Gaila, do we have, when we're going through this, do we have any intergovernmental loans in here that are transferred?
No, there's no intergovernmental loans on this document at all.
Okay, because, for example, on the risk fund, where was the 162,000?
That's going into the risk fund, is that correct?
Correct.
That was the approval by council to take stabilization funds to pay for the Sky Tavern Water Tower, and it's being paid for... And it's being paid for out of the risk fund because that's where the insurance reimbursements are. So that's money that you approved us to move from the general fund to risk to take care of that.
Okay. And then also, I just want to go through these section by section. Section 8, um, also the, um, Public Works Capital Fund. What's the increase in appropriation there?
The, the increase in appropriation there would be those capital projects that we had scheduled to do last year or the year before that we weren't able to do. So now we're moving the money back into this year's budget to be able to do those.
Do you know which ones they are?
I can get you a list of those. I don't have them right here with me, but I can certainly get that.
Okay. And then the other one, um, the parks capital fund, is that, is that out of the parks projects?
That's the parks construction fund. That's parks, the residential construction tax.
And then the other one was the room tax, um, that I believe was in section... I'm sorry.
That's okay, 'cause I can tell you, the, the room tax changes, there's two of them there. One was because we had reduced the allocation to the arts commission and council directed that we needed to restore that. So we've done that. That was like $32,000. And the other is, again, projects from last year, mostly arts commission projects from last year that weren't completed that we moved into this year's budget.
And then section 16 was for communications and technology?
And that is to move, because last year, as we were going through the budget process, we talked about those funds that we were going to move back into the general fund in order to, uh, meet the GASB requirements. Dispatch is one of those and Com- Comtech is one. And that's just, this is just the entry to clean out all those funds. And that's all been considered in part, as part of the budget.
Okay, so we don't have, so the intergovernmental loans?
It's not addressed here.
That weren't approved by council that were done anyway? When are we gonna see those?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can address that. At the, at the Friday or the Thursday session last week, there was a presentation on some items that we needed to bring back to you. And one of them had to do with, with inter, intergovernmental loans. Um, we are targeting, trying to come back on the 9th to get that straightened out. We are working with the state, um, as well, uh, to, to bring that back. Uh, as you know, we've had a little bit of change in staff. We're, we're targeting to get that back to the council to get those straightened out and approved the way they should have been. Um, and to set that straight. And then we'll handle it the way it's supposed to be, uh, from, from here on. We're, so our target is to be here on the 9th with the changes in staff and a couple of things that we're going to be addressing before the 9th. We may hit the last meeting in February, but it will be back in February.
Yeah, and I'm glad, Madam Manager, you're taking control of this because, I mean, we have issues with the Department of Taxation not signing off on the, the sewer fund loan to redevelopment. So I'm very concerned, um, that we get this rectified as soon as possible and making sure that, um, those things come to the council for approval. And I know most of those things were done before, uh, you were the manager, but I'm very concerned and, and maybe we need to audit some of these things. That was brought up at the retreat.
And we will establish processes.
Thank you. Any other questions on each one? Councilman, may I ask you?
Just one. Um, all these change from year to year and from department to department. I mean, if, if somebody just looks at this, looks like we have all this extra money now. Any extra money that came in above our anticipated? I think we had a little more sales tax than we thought, than we budgeted for.
Correct.
But not very much.
No, and we have other things that are going down, so it's kind of offsetting that.
So at the end of the day, is there any new money? What's the amount of new money?
The only new money that's reflected on here are those grants that we received, the federal grants. And that's in, in the range of $2 million, a little over $2 million. But that's dedicated money and that's all that we have on here.
So there's nothing extra in the general fund?
No, sir.
Of any note here?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion on H1. Move to approve?
Oh, we have to read a resolution?
Have to read it first.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The resolution has been read and the proper motion would be for an adoption.
Move to adopt. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H2 has been pulled, so we will move forward to city managers' reports, a staff report of J2.
Good afternoon. Maureen McKissick for the record. Uh, the staff report you have before you today lists the federal priorities which were identified through conferences with Carolyn Chaney and Chris Giglio last November. They reflect the consensus we received from the council and from the staff, and they're before you today for approval.
Any que- move to, we have a motion for approval? We have a motion and a second. Very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, J3, the update discussion, potential direction of staff on implementation of the neighborhood stabilization program. Jody?
Report on this? There wasn't a staff report. Um, Jody Roy, Goodwin Community Reinvest Manager, for the record. There wasn't a staff report because, um, as late as last Thursday, um, staff was working with HUD at a, um, at a seminar where they're writing one-on-one guidance on how to establish, how to design our programs within some new guidance related to the NSP program as it's evolved from NSP 1 to NSP 3. So that's why there was no staff report. There was a memo, um, distributed yesterday that kind of went into the, took some of the changes that we're looking at with NSP 3. But I'll kind of review those in a brief verbal presentation at this point. So, um, late last fall, the, um, HUD released the regulations for NSP 3, which did have some substantial changes from NSP 1 and NSP 2. But since that time, like I just indicated, we've been working with HUD both in assuring that our new program will, um, uh, still be in compliance and develop on the work that's been done with NSP 1 grant, um, from, as a subgrant from the state to the, to the Washoe County Home Consortium and then RHA's current, our NSP 2 grant. And, um, we will have to submit an application by March 1st, which will follow a 15-day public comment period and, which is why we're here, is for your direction on the design of the program related to, but we do have some suggestions coming up. The, uh, we have to identify the target areas. There is a different process for identifying target areas in NSP 3 than, than was used allowable under NSP 1, I guess is the better way to put that. And then detailing the programs that we're looking at implementing. The target areas have to be identified using, um, what HUD calls the map widget. So they actually have a program in place where you draw your, your neighborhood that you're looking at focusing on, and then it spits out some information based on USPS foreclosure and vacant property data as well as, um, HAMD data, um, which is high mortgage. I'm not gonna even remember it now that I'm standing here. Um, anyways, costly mortgages. So they're not really your prime mortgages, but more costly mortgages bordering on subprime sometimes. And then, um, it gives you a score. And you must choose neighborhoods that have a score that is at least 17 out of 20, um, based upon what the information this map widget gives you back.
Jody?
Yes.
If I could, uh, Mr. Mayor, I really think that the Housing Authority should be administering NSP 3, too. I mean, we're gonna be going through...
We're actually, they're, they're, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just so you know, is one of the things that did come out of last Thursday, and we'll be coming back to you with an amendment to the interlocal, because the only way we can give it to RHA, um, to operate is by making them a subrecipient. And I had this conversation with David Morton, actually, late yesterday, is that, and as a subrecipient, there are implications to how they administer the funds, not in a bad way necessarily for them, other than it definitely complicates and minimizes, um, their ability to do it. So when they implement a rental program as a subrecipient, all of that rental income they receive actually becomes program income to the city. So technically, under NSP 1, because we've operated as a subrecipient, which is a clarification they've come out with NSP 3, is that we have allowed them to maintain it with the understanding that there really isn't net income because they have to manage the properties, they have to maintain the properties. That's not the HUD's method of, um, determining if that money comes back or not. So theoretically, what HUD is saying is that the rental income comes in, that comes to the city in some periodic payment, if it's a month, if it's a quarter. But all of that income comes back to the city and then they bill us for every activity of, they have to go mow the lawn, they have to go, um, make a window repair, they have to prep it for the next tenant, that kind of thing. So there are complications. So we actually have to go through a procurement process at this point, which is the conversation I had with David yesterday about, that was kind of where we were going to in terms of, it would be simple, it would be easy, we know it's successful. Um, but the other thing HUD has come out with is that we need to make the significant impact and because of the grant amount, the overall allocation is so much less than NSP 1 or 2. And so our subsequent grant amount is much less than even our NSP subgrant, which was about $4.7 million. Our NSP 3 grant is $1.9 million. So it's not, it, it, it makes it very difficult to actually identify an area and a program that will actually make substantial impact as they're requiring. So we're looking at how we leverage other activities that are going on. We have looked at, um, other RHA activities through NSP 1 and NSP 2, um, the EDIs, that type of thing. Unfortunately, there are so many things going on with HUD at this point. We can't focus on Oliver and Montello because they're having issues with us, um, both RHA and the city of Reno. Concerns about us forcing, I guess for lack of a better word, um, neighborhoods to continue to, ethnicities and races to congregate in neighborhoods, even though it's a historically racial neighborhood by choice. We didn't do any, I mean, we didn't steer anybody to neighborhoods. HUD is actually looking at those many, much more closely and will actually be having a visit from the Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity Office and Section 3 via the state next. It'll be the HUD office, but because it's a state subgrant, they're coming to look at us. So the, so there are all of these things that are kind of playing into how we design the program. So what we did was, I've actually looked, um, the good news is, we actually do have some neighborhoods that don't qualify and meet that minimum score of 17. If that makes anybody...
But that's what I'm saying, Jody. I think what we can do, I mean, Dave is a genius at this, working with HUD. I think if we could work it out between the city and still have, um, RHA be the administrator, because we can't be doing that. We can't be getting the funds and mowing lawns and fixing windows and, and I, and I think that where this council can prioritize is we have the public hearings and then essentially we choose which area that, that we wanna focus the funds on.
And that's where I'm, that's where I'm going today, is I do have a recommendation based upon the criteria that we've worked out with HUD. Um, we have to actually go through an RFP or an RFQ process as opposed to just public hearing process to award, um, it to a developer. That's how they have to be categorized as a developer, which means they can't actually receive administrative funds. So we, so what, like I said, I looked at a number of, of neighborhoods using the map widget, talked to the HUD staff and the HUD technical assistance providers, um, on a repeated basis. And we've narrowed it down to, there are eight neighborhoods that are technically kind of more likely to be successful, including building upon what RHA is doing at, instead with the single family. But also then, there's a preference in NSP 3 to focus on the rental housing. You actually have to justify why you're not doing rental housing with NSP 3 as opposed to NSP 1 or 2. Um, so we looked at, um, our staff's recommendation, and obviously I will take any direction if you don't like this, but is to actually, because we have three plans that identify rental housing for extremely low-income households as the priority. We have the consolidated plan that was adopted in May. We have the Regional Housing Task Force report that was actually adopted before the economy crash. And then the 10-year plan to end homelessness, all of which say that one of the priority housing needs of our community is actually housing to serve 40% and below of AMI. It's not feasible to do that through single-family housing. And we do have actually a number and a growing number of multifamily properties that are in foreclosure. Thankfully, none of our affordable housing complexes, but there are some. Staff's proposal at this point is that actually the primary activity for NSP 3, both to meet the timeliness guidelines of expending 50% of the funds within two years and 100% of the funds within three years, that we focus on a small number of smaller multifamilies and serve that population. It'll help us with meeting the goals in the consolidated plan, meeting the goals of the Regional Housing Task Force report, the 10-year plan, as well as addressing the issues we have with not providing, not having the housing available to get people out of the shelter. Um, so all things that are kind of real to, to community resources staff, at least because we're living it on a day-to-day basis. Um, and then, and we're not talking about like 50 units on a corner. We're talking about like eight to 12 units periodically placed, but redoing them in a manner that reflects the Autumn Village project, which is a substantial improvement. And so by doing a multifamily, obviously it takes up more, its footprint is larger and there is a much more substantial physical impact with that one project. It expends more funds and meets the need.
Councilwoman, let me ask you a question. Are you looking at single-family or multifamily? What, what's your emphasis?
No, I think Jody's absolutely right. And I think, um, we ought to be looking, um, at the downtown core, potentially 4th Street. If there's units there, re, totally revitalizing them, similar to what we're doing. Um, I mean, that would be a win-win. I mean, some of those there. However, the, the biggest issue, um, that we've tried to stay away from, especially when you're looking at, you know, 1.9 million, is if they're occupied, then you have to pay relocation, which is huge. So that's the only downside. We've gotta look at it. Maybe there's one on the market that would help us revitalize the core and, uh, fix up something that's, um, you know, essentially, um, in, in very bad shape, um, it, that's in foreclosure. But I think vacant, um, is the key thing that we're gonna have to look forward, look for moving forward because that's not, I mean, it's not the 20 million you're talking, the NSP. We've, we purposely avoided doing that because you get into relocation, so.
Well, I think you're absolutely right. I think it, it is converting or, um, readapting the usage. And it, it goes, I don't want to get into a long discussion here, but it goes into more things than you're talking about right now, which are very beneficial to the community because we need housing. You know, the recidivism, what is it? Recidivism rate is so huge that if we can break that cycle, and I've mentioned this once before, this is what we're talking about with the police task district and the DIA, is to, to track some of these people and what the burden they are on the community right now and the money's being paid. It's just gonna be amazing when this report comes out in November, December of this year, you'll find out. So what you're talking about, again, I'm not trying to go on and on here, but what you're talking about has implications far beyond just some housing units, but transitioning people, if you will, from where they are now to being productive and, uh, very appropriate citizens for the city of Reno. So I, I, I agree with, that's why I would ask you with the single housing or the multiple housing, because I think that's where the key is that will do the most good in at least the short term.
And I think maybe, Jody, working with code enforcement, um, there may be some, uh, 'cause it'd be a win-win to clean some stuff up over there. You'd be putting people back to work, redoing the property. But I think, uh, we, we should check with code, too.
I'll talk to Alex and check with him. I did, we did actually get a printout of the multifamilies that are in foreclosure right now, and we don't have any along the 4th Street corridor largely because they've been paid off or, or owned by the same people for so long. So they're not, um, foreclosed. And I'll go ahead and make the recommendation. Everybody can tell me what they, what they think. And I can show you a map. Our recommendation was actually, because there are smaller multifamilies in there, was some sub-area of, and it's not far off of downtown, but, um, between Kitski and Wells, between Ryland and Plum, there are about eight properties foreclosed in that area right now, eight multifamily properties. are about eight properties foreclosed in that area right now, eight multifamily properties. We could actually make the substantial impact, I think, that HUD is looking for. I did actually look at the east side of downtown, like I said, so the Silver Star site where that sits empty next to the, because we could also land bank ultimately if, if we had decided, but I don't think we have enough money to buy it, first of all.
That lot just got sold, I think. Somebody just purchased.
Timing is my worst enemy, I tell you. But, so that was the proposal because it was not far from downtown. There are a number of other initiatives going on there. We're still trying to finish up NRP in that area, where the school district is making some substantial investments in the, in the schools in that neighborhood, as well as we have some home projects that are taking place, both new construction and revitalizing some vacant properties themselves. So, that was our recommendation, but like I said, I'm open to, and I'll continue to look. It's just that for staffing reasons, we have to publish, we have to start our fifteen-day comment period right after the first of the month. So, and it can't, it's not that it can't be changed, because if there was public comment that came in, we'd be changing it as well. So, we can come back with what we've published, if you'd prefer, and go from there.
Publishing, Jody. Does it have to be a specific area?
It's the action plan. The proposed area is what it is, and we can propose more than one to start off with and see if there's any issues with any of them, but it, like I said, I'll talk to Alex before we publish it all. We just have to make our action plan available for public comments, similar to when we do the action plan or the consolidated plan. It's, in this case, it's just for fifteen days.
And I think you should bring it back to us because the example, perfect example is Amber Village last night. They talked about, talked about jobs and putting people to work. It's exactly the point. Hundred and fifty people were working on that project. So, it could be something that hopefully we could move forward quickly on, especially if their property's being foreclosed.
So, I'll come back. Do you want us to proceed? I mean, because we will have to publish before the next council hearing either way. So, and like I said, that's because staff will not be available for publishing after the twenty-fourth of February, so we're going to be ahead of the timeframe, which will hopefully help us.
How many areas can we include?
We could include as many as we want, as long as they qualify. The issue is, again, having to make the substantial impact, having to be able to show that you're going to make an impact on the foreclosure issue within the neighborhood.
I, I think you should look at Neal and I think you should look at the, I'm sorry, Linden Grove as well. The only reason I don't say Sted, Councilman Dorch, typically for those types of units, you want them in the urban core, so it's close to public transit. And we're doing a lot of work instead on NSP two. We're, we're out at Sky Vista right now. We got that report, so, okay.
Can we get a motion to approve direction taken by Jody?
Do you want me to say what the recommendation was?
Sure.
Okay, so the recommendation to focus on multifamily foreclosed properties and looking at the Neal and Linden Grove, and do you still want me to look at the Wells Avenue?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and the Wells Avenue areas.
Motion?
Second.
Can we have a second? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. The J four update regarding grievances and arbitrations.
Grandma Rungus. Thank you. For the record, Renee Rungus, Director of Human Resources, you have before you the status report on grievances and arbitrations. There's really no material change since last week. The briefs on the pending arbitrations, the arbitration that's already completed on the staffing, the briefs, the city submitted its brief on Monday, the twenty-fourth, and on the telestaff issue, the date for arbitration has been set as April twenty-second.
Councilwoman Assey.
Thank you for this, and I wonder if next time we can get a, a quick update, not a whole bunch of data on the recent arbiter's ruling in Clark County.
Certainly.
Just to see what, what it was that they agreed on. All I know is what I've read on a couple of different things, but what, what did each side ask for and what did each side give up? Something rough. That would be great to have.
Okay.
With that, I'll move to accept this report.
I do have one quick question. Renee, on the last one, what is our policy on the insurance plan? Because that's an interesting grievance here. If we have two people working for the city, and it sounded like, how does that work if you have both working? In this case, the person didn't want his wife to be covered and she was an employee. He wanted her covered under dependent, so the city would pay longer? Explain that to me.
Sure. In this particular case, the two employees were married, and if the, one of the spouses retired under his particular collective bargaining agreement, the city would pay sixty percent of whatever coverage he had at the time of retirement to age sixty-five. If...
Even for dependent coverage?
If she, if she were on as a dependent, so the city would pay sixty percent of, you know, the total employee-only plus dependent coverage versus sixty percent of the employee-only coverage. If the, if his spouse had left city employment, if the spouse had remained coverage single, which is a hundred percent city coverage while she was working, if she were to leave city employee, employment, and she was a, like a provisional employee, she had been recalled from RIF status, but there was no guarantee of how long the position would last. So, if she were to either leave city employment somehow, then she would lose her coverage altogether. So, from that perspective, she would have partial coverage under his plan. And the city's policy has always been that when an employee starts with the city, that he or she would be covered as a single only, and, you know, if they wanted to choose dependent coverage, in addition to that, that was, you know, they're up to them. And the reason for that was that so there wouldn't be any adverse selection issues that may or may not occur in the future.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to J five, update discussion and potential approval of the interlocal cooperative agreement establishing the Truckee River Flood Management Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Manager Dreska, John Hester, Assistant City Manager. As, as you directed in your December meeting, the staff presented an alternative to the interlocal agreement, creating an authority at the Flood Project Coordinating Committee on the fourteenth of this month. The Flood Project Coordinating Committee made changes to that authority in our local agreement and voted to recommend that to you. You have in your staff report two options, what the Flood Project Coordinating Committee is recommending, as well as the staff-generated alternative to the authority, and you have motions for either option as well. John Flansburgh, Sue Schlerf, and I are here to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hester. Let me just...
John, can I ask one question? Because I think this makes a huge difference, because we have to have all three entities agree on any type of change. How did the county and city of Sparks, have they, have they voted on this yet?
My understanding is Sparks voted unanimously to approve it, and the county voted four to one yesterday, is what I was told, but I wasn't there, but that's what I was told.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me say one thing. I do have the advantage of sitting on, on the committee for six years and being vice chair most recently. I did not get this revised thing until this morning because I was cutting ribbons and kissing babies yesterday afternoon and didn't get here when the staff report was presented in the afternoon. So, I went through it as much as I could this morning in between things and did highlight and outline some of the changes that were suggested and brought forward. And I noticed the staff recommendation was not to approve here. I, I would suggest to you, without wasting a lot of time, and but if we want to go through it, that's fine, is that in all sincerity and due diligence, as far as I'm concerned, I would like to move this to the ninth of February and then come back and, and take, make a decision then. But that is, that's only my opinion because I haven't gone through this. I know what the structure is from dealing with it before and being on the commission, as I said, on the, the committee for six years, but there's still some things, some questions that I have in my mind, and that's, that's only my idea. So, I will take other comments from council and we'll move forward accordingly. Councilwoman Assey.
Just to get the council up to speed, is what changed between the last time and this time, some of the major pieces that got put in there? We did put in a clause that after seven years it'll be reopened, so that there's nothing that permanent in this agreement, so that we all would have to come together and reopen. If there's some paragraphs in here that we thought needed to be changed, we made a few minor changes.
Councilman, can I ask you a question, please? Because I did highlight that one. Go down. What was the reason for seven years? What was, what was, why was that a magical number?
It wasn't really magical. It was just a number that I came up. It could have been anything. They all said seven. I thought it should be an off legislative year, so that would be an odd year from here. I didn't think five would be enough to get some of these things in place. It really could be any of those numbers. It wasn't magical about it. So, that was the only big deal on that one. We also, going through my, my bigger tabs, we had some employee things that we did.
The biggest thing is the unanimous, and we spent five hours, Councilman Guston, at the retreat, Councilman Assey and I did, and we went bullet point by bullet point and tried to bring forward the council's concerns.
I do understand that difficulty because we had that at the board, originally setting this up, it would have to be unanimous, and then we talked about a, a supermajority. So, that was one of the things I was pleased at, that it does have to be unanimous.
Yes, so the city's protected.
Well, I was just going through some of the bigger, bigger points. On three oh two C, if they come to the city with something, we limit it to ninety days, so it can't be like a million years that everyone would have to consider things. The unanimous voting was, was a fairly big deal, but we got that done. We got in here that the chief financial officer would be confirmed by the board. It wouldn't just be at the discretion of the executive director. We put in there some language that certain things would have to go to Debt Management Commission, so there wouldn't be a question about that later on. We talked about paying five percent to Washoe County or others for administrative fees. We also, a, a big one, I think, for the building community was in Article four oh two C, we added a four. I don't know how the exact language in here. I'll find it. But we, we said that in the future, we could allow a local government, the authority may allow by agreement, a member to provide regulatory review and comment on an application. So, that if an application comes forward in the city of Reno or city of Sparks or wants to take control of that, the board can allow that to happen. So, it's not just required that this, that this board have regulatory review. And that seemed to get a lot of the building folks okay with it. The home builders still have some concerns. I think we all got those emails on that. I think some of the grandfathering in here that Mr. DiLoreto was brought up, he, he, I talked to him on the phone. He said he's, obviously doesn't like the whole thing, but he's, he's happy with what he, what was changed. We took out a lot of stuff on membership. I'm sorry, we left that in. Debt management, and I think the last thing that we had was the reopener clause, was the huge deal. And so, I just wanted to let, let the board know, what I heard the problems were from people at this, at our meeting here, we took forward and, and got those changes made at the retreat that we had, where we did go over it line by line, the whole thing. Everyone came forward and looked at every single little thing. So, I, I think I hit all the concerns. I don't know if we have anybody here speaking against it today.
Good. I don't have any cards yet. Can I ask you one more of the question?
Sure.
On the third page of the report, it says that midway down, there was clarification added that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, if federal funds are involved, will establish the priorities of projects. Amplify that for me.
They have to. I, I guess by law, maybe Naomi could, could address that better than...
They said that at the retreat.
We, we talked about that at the retreat, because there's a, a sec. Go ahead, Naomi.
Naomi Dewar, Director of the Truckee River Flood Project. As you're hearing from the council members, the Corps of Engineers will establish each year the priorities for construction, but there's a big but. We have to agree to those because we have to acquire the land in advance of that construction schedule. So, each year, they'll propose to us, here's what we think we can do next year, and we'll negotiate that and move forward. But again, it's initiating from them, and it's driven more by science than politics per se. They generally work from downstream to upstream.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my final comment is, I, I, I don't want to take any, or anybody to take anything away from this. It's the, the well-meaning council people that are working on this, and as hard as they worked at it, just said five hours going through this, and I have experienced some of those long meetings. I, I can empathize and understand that. I just am still a little bit uncomfortable with having not read it stem to stern, getting it this morning, and that's my reservation. That's, I, I know from sitting there for six years, there's nobody in this community that wants to see another flood, and I know that's, that's a priority. We have to get to some agreement that takes care of that or does whatever we can to mitigate the opportunities of, of eventual flooding. I'm hoping that, that two weeks from now is still enough time to make that final decision. That's only me, though, so I will take comments from other people. Councilman Sprouse.
Yeah, one of the reasons, and, and this was my concern, and, and I am glad that we continued this, because I think we had a better product in the long run, Councilman. But the issue is with the core. You know how this is. We finally got them, were, to prioritize us, number one, in Region Nine.
True.
We're up against very, I mean, that's why we had the retreat. That's why we all put this back on our agenda, every jurisdiction. We're in a time crunch here. We've got to come forward with our plan to the core and, and meet those agreements. And they're finally, they were there. We had the head people there at the retreat. We went by, we went, I mean, if you just look at the history of this, this has come before us February first, I'm sorry.
Last year.
Yeah, February first, January fourteenth, February ninth, December sixteenth, with consent to go forward with the JPA. And I understand what you're saying, but we've all, I mean, I think we've all had time to review this. I'm just, I'm concerned about delaying this again. The core specifically stated at our retreat, too, that they, that the, the best practice models essentially are those that have a point, a, a JPA type of authority. They did give a couple other examples. I think it was in California, and the only reason they did the interlocal was if the state didn't fund the project, then the city would fund it. So, that was one of the examples they gave, but we went through it, and they were pretty, they were pretty pleased with, with the product that came out as far as moving this thing along. We had AGC there testify in favor. We had several folks from the building trades in the community testify in favor. I just think it's time we get this thing moving along. Every time we delay this, that's why we met with the retreat, is just another delay.
Any other comments?
Councilman Assey.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
From my standpoint, I don't, I don't have a problem with the continuance. I, I mean, I'll be honest, I'm not going to support it, whether we do it today or we do it two weeks from now. I, I don't support creating another agency and another level of government. You know, we're, we're going to give this agency the authority to go out and tax the citizens of Washoe County so they can bond for $550 million on the hopes that we're going to get a billion dollars from the federal government for Washoe County. And I, personally, I don't see that happening. And this agency's going to be created, and I, and I appreciate the fact that you put in there that, that we look at it every seven years. I don't think there's a chance that this thing goes away. I think once you create this agency, I think they're going to be around forever, and someone's going to have to fund that agency down the road. And our staff comes up and tells us that we can take care of this through each entity. I mean, we're paying $2 million a year right now to have this, this, this agency operating right now, and our staff's saying that we could absorb that within our own, within our own budgets, I mean, with, with what we have on hand. And we're looking at all the other things that we're looking at as far as, as our budget cuts and everything else that's going on, and now we're just talking about creating this other level of government, this other level of oversight that I just think is wrong. So, I, from my standpoint, I mean, I don't, I mean, we can, we can talk about it today, or we can talk about it two weeks from now. I don't think two weeks is going to change my mind, so.
Councilman Assey.
Just as courtesy to you, Councilman Guston, what, what do you see as kind of the outcome if we continue it? I mean, right now, the county's voted in favor of the JPA, and so is the city of Sparks, so presumably, even if we wanted to go back to an interlocal agreement, you've still got to get the other two parties to consent, I believe. So, would the, one of the outcomes be you'd want to make a, maybe a change or a recommendation to go back to both entities?
Well, on the October tenth meeting, I dug up my notes. I had ten questions at that time. Some of them are moot now, have been answered, about the formation of, of the JPA. But to get to your point, I, I haven't read the whole, and maybe the changes in here are exactly what we're talking about. My, my basic... My, my basic premise goes back to, well, mirrors what, what Councilman Dorch said about that, that other layer of government and the fees assessed against the development community. The development community is very fragile right now. Now, not, doesn't mean that they're not going to be back in two years or three years, whatever that period of time is. But I'm, I'm just hesitant and unsure. I, I want to be fully, at least in my mind, I want to be fully, uh, on board. I, I, I am on board with flood project, there's no doubt about that. I want to be fully on board with, with, we're doing the right thing by, by usurping or giving this authority to the JPA and not doing it on an interlocal agreement with staff, especially when staff is saying that that's the way they would rather do that. I haven't read it in, in the, um, the report that we got yesterday, which I received this morning, as I said before. I haven't read it to the conclusion that I'd like to, to be comfortable with it. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
I've not predetermined with a vote yes or no in two weeks.
As I understood, reading the staff report, whether this new authority sets the rates, um, and collects the revenues, if we went under the interlocal agreement approach, the ca- what's recommended here is the county would basically collect it. The jurisdictions collectively would have to set it, but the county would basically be the collector of the rates. But it would be based on the rate study, so you'd still have the same issue of somebody having to collect the revenue, as I understand it. Whether it's the authority or whether it's the jurisdictions based on the, uh, interlocal agreement.
For the record, John Flansworth, Public Works Director, that would be correct. So we would, we would still have a regional rate. Um, under the, the other option, we, we would have the, we'd have to come together, establish what that rate would be, and, and propose that it would be agreed to at a joint, at a joint meeting. If I may, uh, Councilmember Dorch, uh, made the comment about absorbing all these within the existing budgets. There would be, there would, there would be additional staff needed for some work, but there would be a, a certain amount of work that could be absorbed between the different public works departments, work that's already being put into, through the coordination of the projects, as we have them today.
Councilman Jager.
I, too, would not have a problem with, um, continuing it, just so that we can, first of all, have all of our, our voting members here and have perhaps more time to, um, speak with staff about any of the questions that we have. But, um, for me, um, I have, as I think I expressed at our prior meeting, I have a real sincere and severe concern about creating, um, a new agency, a new governing body for something that, um, we already have an existing committee. We've got very qualified staffs, um, at each of these operating areas. I think it flies in the face of the demand that's being put in front of, um, all governing boards and, um, policymaking bodies to be more efficient. I don't believe that the votes we have taken in the past, at least from my participation, to pursue really is to, um, discover and, and bring back the information to make a responsible decision. And that's what we're getting now, is the information that we've requested on along. Um, so I do, I do not have concern that we've talked about this, um, at four or five or seven prior meetings. We're just now getting the information that will enable us to make, um, an, a, a responsible decision. Again, I don't believe that creating a, a new level of government, um, is needed to perform this very urgent task that we have for their community. We need flood control, but it doesn't have to be performed. It, the only way to get there is not by creating, um, a secondary, um, or an additional, um, governing board. We can make it happen, um, with the existing format and at our staff levels. I truly do believe that. Um, it is in huge contrast, if we were to approve it, it's in huge contrast to our own priorities that we, um, established last week, um, that one of those being efficiency and consolidation. It's, it would be in conflict with what we're hearing, um, the movement at the state. Um, and again, the, the State of the State address that we just heard. It's going to be about consolidating agencies that have had very defined and, um, reasonable expectations in the past. But today, they need to be consolidated into one area. Um, and it doesn't surprise me, quite frankly, that the other two entities have approved this particular, um, uh, format, because they're also the ones that aren't interested in moving forward with consolidation. So why would we expect for them to approve something else? Um, I just think that it's, it's a huge failure to the citizens of, of, um, our region to burden them with additional dollars, um, to perform the service that is so needed.
Councilman Niazi. I guess this is where we talk about it. I mean, for me, what the flood, what this project does is it is consolidation. I mean, it's not deconsolidation, it is. It's three government entities getting together to work on something together to solve a common problem. The problem with, we can all do it on our own, why haven't we? That's my simple question. It's been fourteen years since the, the big flood that we all knew about. Why haven't we done anything? And we've done smaller things, but nothing of any, any substance. The, uh, the issue of flood control is, in this one, it goes through all three and even four and five different jurisdictions. And so I don't know if I can count on Sparks to protect us on that side, or the Washoe County. If it's not done in conjunction as a whole plan, it's not going to work. The city of Reno can do what we're going to do, but if, if Sparks doesn't do their share, and Washoe County doesn't do their share, it doesn't work. Uh, I believe that if we go through a different model, we have to go to the state and get some more legislation. Now, I don't mind if people are opposed to it, but let's just cut to the chase and say we're not going to vote for it. But there's another middle way that we can get there, I think. Because nothing's actually done until the next, uh, council meeting, or commission meeting, or Sparks meeting. While they voted on it, they can vote for reconsideration. So one method that we could do here is we could pass it today, or fail it, but we could put on the next agenda to reconsider it. So if in those two, two weeks, someone has questions or problems, we can bring them up and do that, because that saves two weeks out of the schedule. Because if we wait two weeks and then pass it, then it's another two weeks for the next meeting for someone really to look at reconsideration. It doesn't really become official until the, the time for reconsideration is gone. So that's a middle way that we could get there, is passing it now, put on the agenda for reconsideration next time. If all your questions haven't been answered, I'll tell you right now, a vote for reconsideration, and we'll bring it all up again. But that, to me, is a way that where we can get to where we have to get to.
Okay, I, I understand, and I think that's a, a fair statement. Then I, I, I need to be true to what I, what I have said earlier, and what I believe. I, I, I don't, even sitting on there for six years, I don't have enough, so I'm not going to support the motion this time. We'll bring it back for reconsideration on the ninth. That'll give me enough time to answer the questions that I have in my mind. So if somebody wants to make a motion, one way or the other? Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second.
Yeah, comment? I'm, I'm going to support the continuance, just out of courtesy, because I've done it for other council members. I mean, I'm in favor of, of the authority for all the reasons that we've gone through over the last year, particularly on the liability issue. And you've got two other partners that, you know, you need to have two other partners if you want to have an interlocal agreement. And they, they decided to move in a different direction. So I'll support the continuance. But presumably, when we come back here on the, in February, we'll have the vote, uh, on this issue at the table.
And I, I appreciate that support. I will vote up or down at, at that time. It would be no further for me.
And, yeah, and obviously I'll support the motion to continue it. But I do want to comment on something that Dave said, is he said, if it's not done as a whole project, then it's not done. And, and we can't rely upon certain sections of this completing the whole project. That's one of my biggest concerns, is this is a $1.6 billion project, and I don't think there's a chance in the world we're going to get a billion dollars from the federal government for Washoe County, Nevada. And, and, and that's, and that's what I keep hearing, is if it's not all done, then we don't get the benefit. If we don't do the $1.6 billion, we're not getting the, the benefit of it. So we're going to go out and tax the citizens for $550 million.
You're assuming.
You're assuming.
Big assumption on your part. There's nothing in here about a tax rate being passed.
Okay. Is the intent to tax the citizens to pay for this project?
Intent is to study it, to see what's going to happen.
Let me go back to the question I asked in October, which number five on my list is, is it true that the community can afford four to $500 million for this? I don't know.
Well, what's going to change in two weeks?
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm, well, but just giving an example of what I said before. I don't know, Dave. But again, we're paying an agency right now, $2 million a year, to, to, to try to make a determination on whether we're going to tax them to five, to tax this community $500 million.
Well, A, I don't think...
This agency's costing the citizens $2 million a year right now.
That's, that's true, but you, you make it sound like they're not doing anything. I mean, there are projects moving forward, and, and property being made, and agreements that have to be set to do that. If, if we did it separately, the taxpayers wouldn't save that $2 million. It would have to be paid for by individual governments. It would still have to be paid for.
But would it be $2 million?
I would assume so, because we'd have, I, I would assume it'd be very close to that.
Our staff's telling us no. Our staff's telling us no.
Well, with all due respect, I mean, I keep hearing how overwhelmed staff is, how we're so short, things are falling through the cracks. They're not even coming to us for approvals for intergovernmental loans. Our bond rating is, is, is tanking. We've got things, I mean, we have a shortage here, and you expect things to turn around with our existing staff? I agree with Councilman Niazi. If, if this was going to get done, it would have gotten done. That's why we all sat at the table, it wasn't getting done. The sales tax...
How long has it taken that committee to get to this point?
Let her finish her point.
Uh, but the sales tax was being collected, then we formed this board, and a lot of great stuff has been done. We have leveraged a lot of, um, and to the credit of staff and the board, uh, leveraged a lot of private sector dollars partnering, uh, with the public. I mean, the Indian Colony is a example of that, restoration projects. I think we've done five projects, significant projects, for the community on flood control. None of that would have happened. We acquired land, uh, for the purposes of this project. We're still moving forward with those types of things. There isn't going to be an increase in taxes until we have assurances from the Corps that they're going to be moving forward with our project. We are studying all those things now, there may be no, uh, increases whatsoever. We've got to study those things at the board. But for me to hear today that existing staff can do this, when every single time I turn around saying staff's overwhelmed, we can't get this done, or I come to this dais, and we have, oh, we've got to continue this, we need more time. In the staff report, I don't see, this is the single biggest economic development project we've got for this community. All the jobs that are going to be created from this project, one potential flood is over the costs of what this project does, the displacement of the employment in Sparks. This is huge for our community, and I think the more we delay, the worse off we're going to be.
Thank you. Did you have further comment? Okay, Dave?
Yeah, I, I'm, for me, I, I'm going to agree with Dwight. I don't think we need another government. I, the county could have done all this, the fact is they won't, or they haven't. I mean, that's what it comes down to. So I told some people who were concerned, I had lunch with them, and I said, you're right, the county should be in charge of this. But the bare fact is, they haven't, and they won't. So it comes down...
We don't know that they won't. I mean, they, they're relying on this JPA.
No, 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 you, you're absolutely wrong, Dwight. They had this eight cent sales tax for seven years, I think, before this committee was formed. And then the committee was formed. And then it still hasn't been gotten, gotten done at that level. That's my problem about this. So it, it comes down to honestly is, do we need a flood project here, or not? It's that simple. And the way that this is set up, by making unanimous votes or not, the projects will come forward, and we have to have absolute unanimity there to move forward on any project. So it's very simple to me. It's, do we want a flood control project, whether it's $1.6 billion or $160,000? Do we want one, or not? Because it's not going to get done. It can be done the other way, absolutely agree. It won't get done the other way, because it hasn't been. And I think the citizens of this community, if we think that, that we have to get flood control done, I believe this is the only way that it will get done in the future. And that, I, I want to address the $1.6 billion. I don't think that number is accurate, only because when they gave that number, that was the height of everything. And it's going to, I, I honestly believe it will drop down in price when we actually go down and get the bids to get that done. I don't think that we're going to get a billion dollars from the federal government tomorrow. I certainly don't think we could do this $1.6 billion project in a year anyway. It's a long-term project. So if we could get $100 million a year, okay, we could start working on some projects. But the fact is, we have to, we have to do this, and it's not happening. And putting it off to the ninth, that's fine, I'm not going to support it. I think we're ready now. I mean, because that's what it comes down to. We either want flood control, or we don't. It's, it's that simple.
Okay, I, one, one of your points is, I'm sure that if we did it tomorrow, we could save a lot of money, the $1.6, but because it's over twenty years, I, I would expect those escalations to go back there. So your point may be well-taken, mine may be also, that it still may end up $1.6, I don't know.
Land prices are a lot of that.
Yeah, they are. And they've accumulated a lot of land. I think, I'm glad you made the point about the Indian Colony and Walmart. That was, that was a, a direct visible thing that people can go buy right now and see that, that, that flood wall, how that was done. That was, that's very good for our community, obviously. Okay, we have a motion and a second about the continuance. Further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
No.
No? Motion carries unanimously, four to two. Oh, excuse me, not unanimously, carries with a majority, four to two, sorry. Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item K1, Boards and Commission Appointments. Northeast Neighborhood Advisory Board.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll move to appoint Ms. Markham.
Hang on a second. I'm sorry, Dwight, you... We have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Markham. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will continue, no action necessary at this time. On the North Valleys Neighborhood Advisory Board, ditto with the Ward Five Old West Neighborhood Advisory Board. Councilman Niazi, unless you have some different instructions? Okay. Ward Two Central Neighborhood Advisory Board.
Move to reappoint Matt Denio and continue, um, so we have time for interviews on all other applicants.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ward Three Neighborhood Advisory Board, no action at this time. And Historical Advisory Board, same thing.
Frank Partlow, yes.
And the Downtown Police's Special Assessment District Committee, would you go ahead and appoint Mr. Partlow?
Move to appoint Mr. Partlow.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's go to Identification of Future Council Agenda Items. Councilman Niazi?
Two things, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to bring forward the lease for seven at the West Street Market, and maybe make some modifications to that. And also, I'm not sure if it has to come to City Council, but you and I were both there, meeting with the Northern Nevada Food Co-op about putting a loading zone in by their building.
Okay. Any, Councilman Dorch?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the county yesterday, um, approved using, um, the sale proceeds from the, um, water rights of the Sierra Sage Golf Course to pay off some debt. We're in agreement, we have an agreement with them that that money would be used solely for the North Valley Sports Complex. Um, and I think there would have to be some modifications made to that agreement if, if, uh, they're going to use those funds. So I'd like to have that brought back, what their discussion was. Uh, Mr. Guston and I did meet with them, um, and went over some of the concerns we had and some of the things that we'd like to see done. I'm not convinced that any of our comments were, um, considered when they, when they, uh, made this decision to move forward. Um, so I'd like to just have what their actual recommendations were, and, um, any action that we would have to take if, if we decided to.
Yeah, we have to change that agreement. They can't do that without us.
Right.
Yeah.
Which surprises me that, I mean, because I thought we were being pretty reasonable, and, um, they didn't take that into consideration.
Yeah, we'll bring that forward, but as Councilman Dorch said, we both met with them, came up with a proposal that paid off the Sierra Sage Golf Course, and gave the, the North Valleys the things they wanted, a dog park, and open fields, and a, a water facility, and, like you said, it didn't seem like...
And what do they want to do?
That resonated. Well, they paid off the Washoe County Golf Course, and we, and we...
Washoe County Golf Course?
Yeah, and, and we, our, our point was, you can't do that, it's money for the North Valleys. And I don't know where that, how that changed, because I shouldn't go into the discussion here, but that, that changed from what we had proposed to do.
That can go into professional meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, are they doing that just as a placeholder, potentially because of the legislative session, you guys?
Well, we discussed, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, it's your board.
Well, I mean, the argument is, there's, there's about $7 million there, and their argument is that they need, they do need to...
Incumb.
...incumbre those funds. I mean, but, but, I mean, and, and, so they're using it, they want to pay off about $2.4 million of, of bonds, some for Washoe County Golf Course, some for Sierra Sage. million of, of bonds, some for Washoe County Golf Course, some for Sierra Sage, and then use the rest to do the, the features that we talked about out at the park. Everyone was comfortable with them, including the Cab and the Nab in the North Valleys, was comfortable with them paying off the Sierra Sage Golf Course bonds. But everyone had a concern with them paying off Washoe County, because they felt the money was designated for the North Valleys, and it should stay in the North Valleys.
Exactly.
And, and those were the discussions we had. I actually thought, walking out of there, that that was the direction it was going to go. You know, the argument that they need to encumber those funds, they could still encumber those funds and use every dime of it at the park. I mean, they still need Babe Ruth Fields out there, they still need, I mean, there's other things that they could do at that park that would encumber those funds, all 7 million of it. I thought the compromise was, okay, you know, that the North, that the Cab and the Nab came up with was, hey, pay off, pay off, pay off the things that benefit the North Valleys, and then use the rest for the park. So I think that's a discussion we need to have on whether or not we want to amend the agreement or not.
And that's why paying off the golf course was advantageous, because then they could get longer than a one-year contract from somebody, because the current person who has the contract's uneasy about having just one year. That would benefit and allow golf to stay out there. And then the other thing that we brought to the table, Julie Conway, our Parks and Recreation Director, brought that, that we would also contribute funds to build a park under 25 acres, so it's not a regional park, adjacent to this, giving them even more recreational opportunities.
Maybe what we should do even today, it doesn't have to come back to us, but the city attorney should look at that agreement, and before they even spend any money, we should do a cease and desist, or whatever the heck it is we got to do, so they can't, they cannot spend that money.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. We will pull the agreement and take a look at that. That would have to come back to you separately, as there's no action today, so thank you.
No, but you, as the attorney, if they're violating the contract, you can do that on your own, correct?
We can go ahead and look at that. If we were going to take any legal action, we usually come back to council for direction, unless there's a time constraint that we are unable to do that in order to protect the city's interests, but we'll let you know on that.
Well, there might be, if they voted yesterday, they might move the money today.
And I don't know what their motion was, at least the conversation that Dan and I had with them, was that they were going to recommend to bring that amendment to us.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's what the actual motion was yesterday or not. I don't know if they just voted to go ahead and proceed forward, or to bring that to us for our approval.
We'll, we'll take a look at the record that occurred and, and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other future agenda items? Moved to lay as on reports, any reports there? Is our subcommittee, our special events subcommittee under this? I didn't see it. We'd like to be very brief about-
You can do it under the conferences or professional meetings.
Okay, I'll go under L3 then. Yesterday, there was a meeting held, it was, the genesis of it was in the, the Special Events Subcommittee, Councilman Iasi and Councilwoman Zadra and myself sit on that. At, Mike Houghton, at a previous meeting, I think it was in October, November, said that he would organize, bring all the groups together that had special events as a priority for them, and he also brought their, their research firm out of Boulder, Colorado, to explain what they did and what research, and it was a wonderful meeting, 40-plus people were there, there were some really, some, some, some great things discussed about it, and we brought, for both Councilwoman and I brought some points forward that we need, as we were told last Thursday in our meeting, that special events are going to be, are going to help us rebound a lot quicker, and we do what we can to make those successful and bring those forward. And so our comments were to the point that we either organize a committee or advisory group, or that the RSCVA take that as a priority, and both, both members of that board I've spoken to, and they're fully, I got this in force on February 24th or 26th, you might explain, because it's kind of like, it's kind of come down to a lead, follower, get out of the way. I mean, this, this is really important for the community, as the people who did the research showed, you, you're doing a lot of things, but maybe you're not reaching the right targets, or maybe you are, or maybe you need to, to just tweak them a little bit and make this happen. We need to make sure that calendar is full, for as soon as we can fill it, and on and beyond. So that was, it was a great meeting, and it was, everything is promised, brought it together. Not that there was a lot of new information, but I think it helped coalesce and unify the people that were in that room, that somehow, whatever this new appointed committee is, or whether it becomes the RSCVA's main mission, that this is what has to be done.
I would add to that, Mr. Mayor, that the one thing that did come out of it is, there was a general feeling of commitment from these 40 people, different event organizers, different governmental agencies, that agree, it's time for us to share information and work together. That was really a big step.
And the other thing they talked about, which I thought was huge, was identifying and, and coming up with some metrics that really explains what attendance is.
You want to draw, go to the L9 now, Mr.?
Brief, we'll come back, we'll come back to that, thank you. So, yeah, very appropriate. But again, I'll, I'll get off that, but the, the metrics that, that tells us what the attendance is, because really, the air races came forward with their actual numbers, and told us what their actual numbers were. Even though they, they talk about 200,000 or 300,000 people over the, the life of the event, they really actually talked about yesterday, and so it's public information, that there were 75,000 attendees, but they come multiple times, that's how the numbers. We need those, those same metrics for all other events, so then when people come to us, rightfully so, and say, "I think this event is going to be a big wow in the community, or what we're going to do," we have something to gauge why we, we would allot the taxpayers' money to promote that event for the good of the community, et cetera. They also said something interesting, which I think you'll find, that the 20% to 30% of the local attendance at these events makes a difference between success and failure. I'd never really heard that before, but they said that was really, the other people come and they spend money, and they do the things they do, but that 20% to 30% of local participation is huge and paramount for them to be successful. So what we can do, we explain to the community why we're doing this, what benefit it is to them, et cetera, et cetera. So it was, it was a great meeting, and we'll have more in our special events committee meeting later on. Any other reports from conferences or professional meetings?
I, I need a future agenda item.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Kind of jumped ahead. I, I would like to find out if we had already did our allocation to EDON, we had approved it, because it looks like those boards are going to be potentially disbanded under the governor's proposal. And I don't see why we would pay the 70,000 over to that organization when they're doing the, the, um, did we already do it?
I think we did in December.
I think it was approved at one of the recently-
It was, but I'm saying that we cut-
What's the check cut?
Was the check cut already? Because typically it takes, I didn't see it on the disbursements the last couple times.
We'll double check.
Um, because that proposal that was done in the state of state address, my understanding is they're going to combine it and really make it one board, public-private partnership, so I, I would like to see if we can hold off on that, because we're putting money for nothing.
Okay. Moving forward to the L-items, discussion potential direction of staff regarding the downtown police tax district. Although I wanted to ask the council's approval to, if we need to spend more than two hours. I had a meeting with the chief, and with the chairman of the, the tax district, also spoke to people on the DIA, and putting all of us together, because the chief said he was very open and willing to look at policing downtown and make some changes, make some things that, that maybe need to be changed, or could be adjusted, very simply things that, days on, days off, et cetera, et cetera, to give better coverage in downtown, so that's what I'd like to ask the council to approve, at least two hours to go forward with that.
Dan, I'm, I just have a question about that. That's one of the things that may come up in our budget, is actually cutting that a lot. So how would we, I just want to know if we got the cart before the horse, to look at the, if we have the current financial situation, and the chief says, "Here's how I'm going to move things around," and then we take a big cut, and then he's got to move things around again.
No, you're right.
It's just how staff time's allocated, is all.
You know what, I think you're right about that. I think we should get their budget approved first, then we go back and say, "Okay, now with this budget, what adjustments, what allotments can you make, chief, how we go about it?" You're, you're absolutely right.
Or in conjunction with the budget, if, if they had an indication from us that it's going to get cut, then-
Because it was brought up, both in that meeting by the, the chairman of the, the downtown police tax district, and then reaffirmed in the meeting, that we have had offers from properties in town to help us with the security, to put as many as four more people on the street. And I think the Palladio would be one of those people that might be involved in this, and so that's what the plan would encompass, is not only his, his officers, but other security opportunities, whether they be off-duty officers hired by the individual properties, or they be some other security force. So we're looking at all that, and I, but I think you're right, Dave, I think we should get the budget in line first, and then come back. It'll be, make it easier on the chief to determine what allocation of resources he can or cannot make. Thank you. So let's hold that for- L5, discussion potential direction of staff regarding a new standard item on the city council agendas to recognize good deeds and positive events in the community.
Mr. Mayor, this is something that I brought forward a couple of months ago, and it, it really will take more than two hours of staff time to kind of put together a plan, but the idea is, there are so many businesses that are doing well, and people who are stepping out in front of the economic concerns, new restaurants, you know, that have been open, particularly in the downtown area, and people who are just moving forward, who are doing something good for the community, just to give them a pat on the back. So put a, kind of a plan together. We need to feel good about our community, for people to start feeling good about our community, and giving them recognition for risks that they're taking to grow our economy and make the, the community the, the place we all want it to be.
Then motion?
Motion, please.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye? Aye? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. L6, discussion and potential direction of staff regarding initiation of an amendment to the Damonte Ranch P U D handbook to clarify unlimited gaming and restricted gaming uses. Review of overall land uses, clarity, variance, authority, and general organization and cleanup of the handbook and the standards. Councilwoman Zadra?
That's a mouthful. It was brought to my attention by Community Development and Legal that we had some inappropriate language that pretty much resulted when we were creating the Regional Center Plan, and we made reference to some things that were not intended, some unintended language was put into that. So this is cleaning it up in specifics, it's things like, we took away, Damonte was willing to take away gaming, hotel casino, but we also took away restricted, you know, the little bar top slots that could be in a restaurant that already exist out there. So it's that type of cleanup that staff advised me we needed to make, so motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. L7, discussion and potential creation of a council subcommittee for state legislative issues. Councilman Iasi?
Yes, this was just to see, we have this on other boards and commissions, whether the council is interested in, in having a subcommittee that could meet weekly, or, I mean, they have to be publicly noticed meetings, but it could be noticed more often. So if there's any issues that come up at the legislature, could come to the subcommittee, and they could give some staff some direction on how to go, and anything that happened then would be put on the next agenda for the full council to adopt, or rescind, or whatever. But to try to give our, our folks down there, I think things are going to move really fast this year, so it's just, if everybody wants to be on the subcommittee, we'll just have council meetings. So I, I don't know who's interested to be on it or not, I don't need to set up new meetings.
You know, Councilman, I'm glad you're laughing, because I'm doing the same thing, because I just took a poll, see who wanted to be on it, and I knew, the people I could talk to, five wanted to be on it. So the suggestion is, I don't know if it's, if we put it on our regular meeting, or we put it on the, uh, uh, because the noticing is sa, the same for a subcommittee as it is for a special council meeting, right?
That's correct. It takes three days to advertise for, for any public meeting.
I know, I, I did speak to the mayor on this, and he said, "Well, you know, I want to be on that." So, and, and he does have a lot of sway, and obviously with people down there, and, and I would suggest that Councilman Sifrazas should be a part of that, that subcommittee if we had one, but I found out that there are at least five people, so I would suggest that we do it on a, a notice meeting, or, or some-
It would be, it would be like a weekly scheduled Friday afternoon, or Monday morning meeting, that's every week of the Reno City Council.
I, I think that's what works for people.
And, and if there's no issues coming up, we can always cancel that meeting.
Exactly, exactly.
But it can be automatically scheduled, automatically noticed.
Right.
And if, if, if nothing comes up, then it can just be canceled.
Okay. We do them at the-
Set a motion?
Who has time, though, too, to go to the legislative building? Who's going to really be there and put in that effort as well?
Well, that's what we've got to be sure of, there's got to be four people there. That's the other sort of downside, you have to have four votes to give staff direction on anything.
I, I think from the people I've talked to, I mean, they, they know the importance of what is going to hit them, and I think that we, I think we can get commitment to have four there.
And we would have the meetings here, in the council chambers, just as we do now.
Here or seven?
We would make it late in the afternoon.
Seven, or here, or wherever? Okay.
I don't think we need a motion, then just start, start them up.
All right, we'll do it.
What day is it going to be?
She'll have to figure that out.
We'll, we'll have to contact the council, see which date works, works well, and we'll make it either early in the morning or late in the day, depending on what the council, Cadence is telling me, late in the day, so.
If I may, based, Cadence Matievich, Legislative Relations Program Manager, based on the Senate and Assembly Committee meeting schedule, Senate and Assembly Government Affairs meet Monday, Wednesday, Friday at 8:00 a.m., and then Assembly Taxation meets at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesdays, Thursdays. So if we could find an afternoon time, the afternoon committees, we don't anticipate will have as much activity for us, so if we can find an afternoon-
So is midweek better than, than latter part of the week, it sounds like? Does it give you some reaction time?
Potentially, yes. We had, you know, and obviously this is at, at your availability, not mine, we had, we had thought about the, the possibility of just leaving it on Wednesday. We would have the item on your, on your council meeting agenda every Wednesday, and then the following Wednesday, so that gives you a week between meetings, should give us time to react. Obviously, if, if we had to react sooner, we could find a different date, but if we had our standing on Wednesday afternoons, if, and I don't know, obviously, that, that may not work for-
That might make more sense, because we're, I think more of us are open on Wednesday than any other day, simply because of the council meetings. Okay, thank you.
And I'd also like to say, I think, get this out here right now, I don't expect our lobbyists to be there to attend here in person every time. You don't, don't think you've got to rush back here, we have a good phone system in here, so let's work on it that way.
Okay, good. Item L8, update, discussion and potential direction of staff regarding the city's franchise agreement with Waste Management. Councilman Iasi?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, this is just, we had, we, we were told that we were in negotiations with Waste Management, and I hadn't heard anything about it, so I'm wondering, are we in negotiation with Waste Management?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there seems to be, there is a group that's working in terms of trying to come up with an agreement that might work for all three entities, but at the same time, we have another entity group coming toward us, another corporation coming toward us with a different idea.[1655.11] coming toward us with a different idea. So, what we're trying to do is to look at what's available. I'm not saying that we would want to go with what all three cities, which is what Waste Management is looking for us to do, is to have one that applies to all three cities. That may or may not be in our best interest. But we also need to look at the limitations that might be put on through that agreement with, as it pertains to the other corporations. So, we're going to be bringing an analysis of that back to the council in terms of what the other corporation is looking for versus what Waste Management is looking for, for a policy decision. We aren't at the point to bring that, to bring that yet. I wouldn't say we're necessarily in negotiations. There are discussions that were happening between the three entities and Waste Management.
And when, when would we be ready to bring that forward? March?
At this rate, it'd be either late February or March.
I'm okay with, I mean, it's been going on for...
Yeah.
But the other, the other thing I'd be curious about is, how do we actually negotiate something unless Waste Management's opening up their agreement? I don't know. Are they, did they call, because they have six or eight years left on their franchise agreement. So, is this how we usually do things with people, is you negotiate everything ahead of time before they decide to pull the trigger and say, now we'll officially negotiate? So, that can come back in March also. I was just curious where we are after that statement because I hadn't heard anything about us negotiating. But part of that, I'll ask one more thing, Donna, is, I'd like to see, like we do with a lot of contracts, when that comes forward, what are they doing in other jurisdictions?
Okay.
You know, Las Vegas, I heard they just changed their garbage collection where they do, they do their two bin once a week, and they didn't raise the prices on anyone. So, I'd just be curious how that works everywhere else.
Okay. L9, update, discussion and potential direction of staff regarding Hot August Nights. And I did have a brief discussion with, Mrs. Matievich is on her way up right now, and you were scheduled to have a meeting today. Was that correct?
That's correct. For the record, Cadence Matievich, for this item, Special Events Program Manager. We did have a meeting with Hot August Nights, and many of the downtown property managers related to the 2011 and even beyond. But if I may, I'd like to back up a little bit. You did ask for sort of an update on where we've been since they were last before you. Hot August Nights has submitted their special event permit application to the city for 2011 and 2012. They submitted that to us back in mid-October. We completed the preliminary review with our Special Events Committee with them in November, and then provided them with a cost estimate for the city services in late November. Based on that cost estimate, they indicated they would be looking for us to sharpen our pencil. And so, we've had some dialogue with them and with the downtown stakeholders, which resulted in today's meeting. I would characterize it as a very positive meeting, as was the one that we had just with the property owners without Hot August Nights, looking at opportunities for the property, the property owners to get their staff more involved from a security standpoint, you know, similar, I think, to what I heard you just say on another one of the items, that are there places where perhaps private services could, if it's the casino security staff, if it's other, other types of waste, not waste management, the corporation, but trash management, those sorts of things that we've been doing that potentially could be done by, by another, another entity, and looking at if that could potentially reduce our costs. And so, at this point, the downtown properties are going to prepare a proposal for us, for those areas where they think that they can participate. And based on that, we will adjust our cost estimate and provide that back to Hot August Nights. I did want to, sorry.
Let me ask you this. I briefly asked you this question, and have you been able to verify that there is, at this point in 2011, there is a conflict on one particular day, the final day of the proposed auction, and another vendor who is scheduled for setup at the RSCVA at the convention center? Has that been resolved?
It has not. At this point, it is still what I would call a potential conflict. The RSCVA did have another convention under contract for the Reno Sparks Convention Center, for their move-in to be scheduled for the, what is the final Sunday of Hot August Nights. They have indicated that there is a possibility that they would be able to delay their move-in to allow Hot August Nights to remain in there as long as they desired. And it's, it's not the entire convention center, it's, it's portions of it. But it's based on their decorator schedule, and they had been booked before Hot August Nights had changed their date. So, this is, the conflict's been out there since we knew of the date change.
Let me suggest, then, that just, I understand you've covered the point, and maybe our representatives on the RSCVA, because I understand, again, third-hand, but the gentleman, Mitch Silver, who runs that auction, made the comment that it doesn't matter if it's the final weekend or the beginning weekend, because the success they've had here, and it's a great money raiser for Hot August Nights people, that, that we do have a certain amount of locals, I said earlier how important locals are, and people who just wander in on Hot August Nights that do buy cars. But they're also, there's a scheduled group of people that show up, and that, that could be maybe to our benefit, maybe to the community's benefit, maybe to everybody's benefit, if in fact, that contractual obligation were the week before, instead of the week after, and everybody's conflict would be resolved. So, I just bring that up.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, as I said, that, the, the conflict, that, that business had been booked for a considerable amount of time before anyone at the convention authority was aware that Hot August Nights, I think anybody in the community was aware that Hot August Nights was going to be changing their dates. So, I think this other group is, is open to being as flexible as they can, provided that the delay, it doesn't result in a significant increase in their costs over time for their decorator having to load in.
And I understand that. I'm just trying to illuminate a little bit, but, but maybe a solution that works for everybody. So, thank you.
Okay. If I'm...
So, when will we have the next report from you as to the success of this meeting and going forward with Hot August Nights?
I would imagine that that would be in early March. We, we set a timeline today for late February, sort of to be our, our next group meeting, you know, following timelines of when the properties are going to get their proposals to us. We would evaluate that, redo our numbers, and resubmit that to them. So, I would anticipate being able to give you an update in, in March.
Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I would like to point out, on last Friday, I forwarded a memorandum to you from Hot August Nights, an executive summary of their economic impact study from the 2011 event. And to Councilman Ayazi's credit, he pointed out to me last night that they have some mathematical inconsistencies within that report, that I, I did speak with Mr. Walter today, and he is going to go back to their research firm and ask for clarification on those items. So, expect to get an update on that economic impact report summary from me in, in short order.
Kudos to the councilmen. Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments?
Yeah, I have a question about this one, maybe not for Cadence, but how does the RSCVA, for my RSCVA members, when you, when they give up the, the convention's event center, not out there, but the event center for Hot August Nights, how does that affect the city of Reno?
In room rates, or...
No, just for paying our bonds.
Oh, oh.
I mean, because I'm wondering how the RSCVA says, we'll give you this facility to use, but I don't see how that's in our best interests for the RSCVA to do that, giving away the facility, so we have trouble paying our bonds. They're supposed to charge for that facility. And I'm wondering if that's good stewardship of, they're just managing it for us. They don't own the facility. So, I'd get upset if a manager was giving away my property. At least, RSCVA shouldn't get credit for it. It should go onto our board.
If I may, Dave, just interestingly enough, that's one of the discussion items that came up yesterday, about what we could do to make it attractive enough to bring people here, if we had, again, go back to the metrics of looking about what, who benefits from 4,000 people in town and them spending X dollars during that period of time. How does sales tax, how does room tax, et cetera? Because it was interesting, one of the charts they had up about the rooms being used for jam it on basketball, when Jam It On Basketball was here with Matt Williams, and how so many of those people were in the, the non-gaming properties in other properties in town. So, I think that's a legitimate question, and we need to work through that to find out who does really benefit. And that's, that's what we're headed towards with the Special Events Committee, to find out who's coming to town, what they're spending, where the benefits are going, and may help answer why, from the RSCVA side, say, well, we brought the biggest balloon convention into town because we gave them this, this room, this, we gave them this rates, because they spent money in these other places which ultimately benefited. I think that's a key question to ask.
Well, that might be fine, but at least it should be on the city of Reno donating that property, not the RSCVA. That's my point.
I got you.
It's easy to give away someone else's land, you know. I'll let them use the Peppermill all they want, and I'll take the $300 million that helps there. But I, I do want to say about this executive summer, summary, these guys are laughing at us again.
Okay.
They're not giving us any information that they promised us six months ago. This, if I take the numbers that they're, I don't even know how they got to them because they're not giving us the real summary. If the average person spent $424, and it raises $254 million, simple division says there was 598,000 people at the event. Paragraph above, they say 885,000 people at the event. And we're going to go meet with them and be real nice to them again, and they can't even give us this that they paid a lot of money for, and they won't give us their, they're just pulling our chain again, and we're just going to say, okay, fine. Say it again.
Thank you. I haven't read it myself, but I will make that a priority to read it, to find out if I came to the same conclusion. But I don't doubt what you're saying. That's part of the discussion again yesterday about who's actually showing up. I mean, nobody believes there are 800,000 people here, but, but real numbers, and, and I think that's what my, if I put words in your mouth, that's what you're saying. What are the real numbers?
Actually, it's a little off. I'm saying, they hired a search for, a firm to go decide that, and the numbers don't add up. So, I, I think it's not that they don't know. I think they just don't want to tell us. I mean, they're assuming from, I read this, they assume that every person who stayed in every hotel room in Reno Sparks, Washoe County, Lake Tahoe are attributable to Hot August Nights. And I, I think people come here for other things, but they're taking every room and say, they're all Hot August Nights people. So, they should have to give us their methodology instead of this executive summary on any level. If we're going to come to this, the basic tenet is, if we're going to come to this agreement, everybody's got to be honest, or we're not going to come to an agreement. And I'm not sure, is this, is this, I'll take a little kind-hearted jab. Is this a Special Events Committee, a new regulatory agency?
But they're not going to charge any fees. Don't be any fees.
Should we do our own? Should we do our own special events and not care what the RSCVA does?
How much are we paying in salaries over there?
Enough jabbing. Okay, that's enough jabbing. Let's move on to L10, discussion and potential direction of staff regarding possible restructuring of the Washoe County Human Services Consortium. Councilman Sefrazza?
Yeah, quick question on this, Jody. How much is the, the person that we're paying to administer this program, does that come out of grant funds?
Jody Royal, good one for the record. It does come out of CDBG funds, our person.
Okay. So, the, those CDGB funds, so technically, they could go to the nonprofit groups, though?
No. The, the funds that are used to pay for staff are specifically for admin funds. Remember that public service dollars under CDBG are capped, and so, we're capped at the public service between the CAC and the public service dollars.
Because I think if we look at, maybe talking to the other jurisdictions, since that's the case, since we have the staff person then, and then that's what we're doing under the CDGB. But yeah, my proposal is that we have a member of each of the NABs sit as the advisory committee, making the recommendation ultimately with city council approval.
Separate from the other jurisdictions, is that where you're going? Yes. I just, I'll take that. The plan had been that the staff would be continuing to work now that we've resolved the immediate issue of needing to allocate the 11, 12 funds to start working on the revisions to the process and come back with a whole proposal. I don't think the other, the other jurisdiction is certain. I don't know that as staff, we were recommending that we pull out of the human services.
No, I'm recommending it. I don't think we need three people administering a grant program that administers $400,000 in grants. It's ridiculous.
Would you be, I mean, because I think where we were going was that we would be looking at a way that there wouldn't be three staff people doing the $400,000, but that everybody would still be pooling money into the $400,000 instead of our $200. Okay.
I think the process is too cumbersome. I think that we're putting majority of the funds in the city of Reno. Just talking to the various nonprofits, they'd rather just have, come to one place instead of doing it the way that we've been doing it in the past.
Okay.
And, and I think this works hand in hand with our budget, too, because our NABs give money to the various nonprofits. So, this way, they're sitting at the table, they're familiar with that process. So, I think each member, a member from each NAB would be appropriate. But for this fiscal year, I agree with you, we still have to administer. But I don't see how much there's to administer. We're doing the exact same allocation as we did last year. So, as you, there's no staff time in processing the applications. They're not meeting in front of the advisory board. They're not calling the board together for a meeting. So, I don't see what is really needed there, other than cutting the checks.
Yeah, in this case, she's, she does the mon, Stephanie Kane is the staff person who does the administration of this human services grants. And it's the, the cutting of the checks, as you say, but also the overall contract management, compliance with the CDBG regulations, ensuring that they, that they are collecting the documentation. And she does more. I mean, I want to be clear that that's not her only job, is this public service dollars. Okay.
But as I understand this agenda item, staff would come back to us with a report that looks at the advantages and disadvantages, pros and cons, before we'd make a decision? Or is this agenda item intended to be exactly as you just explained it?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I believe this was created through an interlocal agreement. So, we would think legally you would want us to look at the terms of that agreement, so we maintain compliance, you know, and there's probably a termination provision.
Okay, but I want to make sure I'm clear. I mean, I understand the direction. I'm going to support it with the understanding it'll come back to council for final approval because I haven't seen the final product, and I may not agree after I've seen the staff report as to what the advantages and disadvantages are.
Okay.
With, okay.
Yeah, so it would come back to us.
Yeah, I, I guess, Jody, that would be my motion with those parameters, but also looking at the interlocal agreement. My understanding is, too, the county's not going to fund it.
They have not committed to funds at this point.
So, I mean, we got to look at that, that interlocal and it coming back to us, so...
All right, second. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. L11, discussion and potential direction of staff regarding facilitating community efforts to combat graffiti.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. Last week's discussion, obviously stimulated by Mr. Hawkins, what we have conceptually talked about in our organization. I'm going to go back to 2005. Mr. Sefrazza will remember the, the series of events that kind of started the graffiti enforcement and abatement team, and how effective it had become over those four or five years. Is the first thing is, is how we're going to engage these citizens groups and do neighborhood cleanups. We did the first one at Stewart Street Park in Ward III in 2005. I believe it was October of 2005. And so, that's one thing that we're discussing. The second thing is, I've, I've looked at replacing that second truck, and I'm getting a bit on that. We retained the, the abatement device, the container that we utilize to abate and paint, and we still have that in storage over at Public Works, and we're looking at the costs associated with replacing that truck. And, you know, you ask, how are you going to staff that? What we did is we task save last week, and of course, they're seniors, but could they come up with a staffing plan for, for low angle, non-gang graffiti in our community where they could go out and probably cover maybe 30 to 40 hours a week? The other thing I've done is, I think I mentioned it briefly at the council retreat, is I have called the sheriff, Mike Haley, and asked him if he would be willing to look at participating by providing a full-time maintenance person, so they could, we could fill that, that second vehicle more than just 40 hours a week, if we utilize save and a maintenance person from the sheriff's department.
Did staff have enough time to look at the, we have the CDGB grant for neighborhoods? Would this qualify? Now, we had done the code enforcement. If we wanted to put, if we wanted to staff that truck with a regular...
The staffing won't qualify. We could purchase the supplies for CDBG eligible areas one of two ways. Either through the NRP process, the Neighborhood Revitalization Program process, a NAB in a CDBG eligible area could apply for the funds to purchase that equipment. I assume it's like paint and that kind of thing, but...
Do we have a truck?
Yes, we do have one truck. And the sheriff's department has that old truck, Mr. Sefrazza, that we actually gave to them many years ago. And again, I think it was mentioned at the retreat, that old truck, with the new truck, it's 10 to 1. We can do 10 jobs to the one of the older truck because of the, the issues with the paint schemes and things like that.
Jody Royal, good one for the record. Just for, the one thing that we would need for the CDBG program is a new, is an ordinance defining blight for the city of Reno. Right now, we rely on the state definition of blight, and that is essentially a redevelopment area. So, we'll need to adopt an ordinance locally of what the definition of blight is.
That adds graffiti to that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the staff person, chief, what would it cost to have a staff person?
A full-time staff person, under the pace goal for the city of Reno, about $60,000.
Now, chief, one of Jack's offers, I guess, was he wanted to engage the private sector to assist us in the, do you have any thoughts on that, how we could mobilize, you know, maybe neighborhoods, his group, to go out and, you know, help eradicate graffiti?
I, I think we could, we could probably use territorialism with respect of looking at businesses in those geographical areas that may provide services to customers in those areas, and get them to partner with us. I mean, that, that's a great idea. Instead of just saying, hey, citywide, who wants to help? I mean, get those coalitions in the neighborhoods like we did in '05, and, and build a, a business group that is attached to those coalitions. And I think that would be fairly effective. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, any further questions?
No, I, I do want staff to bring, I think that's good to bring back that order. No, I do want staff to bring, I think that's good to bring back that ordinance, because graffiti is blight. So I think we should work with the Neighborhood Stabilization Program to buy the supplies and then work with the business community and the volunteers, because they're willing to do it. But I also think Jack's suggestion last week of the scheme on the boxes is very good. I think that would help deter a lot of that, whether it's stripes. I mean, he's got a creative mind. You know, being an architect, I think that that would help if we could get the, if staff could work, too, with the utility companies, RDC cities, so it's uniform around the city. Because they want something that stands out, and I do think some kind of pattern would be a deterrent. We ought to look at that.
Okay. I agree, especially like the bars, because it's a subliminal message that that's what may happen. You may end up behind bars if you paint over it.
Very good point, sir.
And then can we get a quarterly report on this?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't need a motion, we were, do we need a motion? I don't think so.
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's move ahead to the open, the Joint Reno City Council and Redevelopment Agency Board meeting and ask Mr. Scott to come forward. As he does, Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Ask you. Guston?
Here.
Zadra? Sforza? George? Azzi? Cashell, absent, Scott?
I had mentioned before, excuse me, in our city council meeting, that had been requested that items C1 and C2 be pulled from this agenda. And that was approved. So are there any other changes or additions, deletions, comments about the agenda? Move for an approval?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The, I think the request was to have them continued, and just from a legal standpoint, if you could open them and just continue them to the next, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Jonathan. Okay, so we will do that. So we have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes of the December 8, 2010 meeting?
Motion's approved.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor say aye? Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I have no public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments? No. We'll move quickly then to item B1, the staff report acceptance of the annual audit report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2010 for the Redevelopment Agency of the city of Reno.
Hi, Lynette Hamilton, Academy Manager for the Finance Department. Last week, the city council approved the CAFER for the city. But also, I think in 2002, 2003, the council had also directed that a separate annual audit report be prepared for the Redevelopment Agency. And that is this report that's being forwarded to you for your acceptance.
Questions, Councilman Sforza.
Yeah, note 15 on page 43 of the CAFER. How does that happen? Expenditures were in excess of budget in the following fund, which is a violation of the NRS.
What happened is we had some costs that were higher than anticipated related to the West Street Market operations, and we also had some lower revenues due to tenants vacating. By the time we realized that the expenditures were go over, it was too late to bring back to the council for a budget augmentation to cover the costs.
So what are our internal controls? Because now this is the second CAFER that's come back with, you know, the intergovernmental loans, going over and expenditures in excess of budget. What's our internal controls down in finance, so this stuff doesn't happen?
I mean, to the best of our ability, the budget personnel try to look and project out what the expenditures are going to be. But if we have late invoices that are submitted, or some other costs that come up that we're not aware of, that we have to book back into the year. You know, I can say is, I know budget and finance try their best to try to be proactive to catch all those, but, you know.
And then on the separate, because we had asked for several, separate statements in RDA1 and RDA2, so.
They're in the back.
Yeah, we're seeing those transfers come out. And note 11 on page 41, the interfund transfers, the RDA's debt service fund. Can you explain that to me when that was approved?
That would have been approved as part of the budget augmentations. And what happened on that, it was for the debt service, because of all the restructuring that we did a few years back, we didn't need as much ad valorem tax in the debt service fund to cover debt service. And so we moved a portion of that ad valorem tax back into the Redevelopment Agency General Fund.
Okay.
But that would have been approved as part of the, either original budget or in one of the budget augmentations that were submitted to council. I don't know the exact data that I couldn't look and see.
We can get that for her?
I'm sorry?
We can get that for the council.
Sure.
And then the, on page 34, the related party transactions, you have downtown maintenance at $783,000.
Okay.
What was the actual revenue that came into that fund?
I'm trying to see if there's someone from RDA here that knows that to cover.
42.
We'd have to get back to on that. I don't have that broken out specifically.
On the indirect allocation, how do we get to that, that $527,000? I understand we went through the formula, but our staff, I mean, essentially, redevelopment is nonexistent, other than we're maxed out, we're paying bonds now. That's what the Redevelopment Agency is. We're paying bonds. All the money is going to debt service. So the 527, I think legal would be, I'm assuming shipment would be in here. But what are the other indirect allocations on that 527?
Sure. Rob Miller, Office of Management and Budget. The indirect cost allocation has a two-year lag. So the cost allocations for that would been for the previous fiscal year. So you won't see a reduction in indirect cost allocations based off of activity until next year.
Yeah, that was something that, when we were doing the discussion with planning and building, too.
Correct.
But we, I mean, we may want to look at, I understand the formula, but it may not be the right formula in this economic environment.
Absolutely, and as part of the budget process, the indirect cost allocations are in there. And we can definitely have a more thorough analysis for you of what goes into the basis for the indirect costs when we go through the budget process this year.
Okay, and then also, it's broken down on how much of the, on the back pages are, is really going to, from redevelopment 2 into redevelopment 1 for those obligations. I would like staff for the budget to have a breakdown of that. I think that's important for our redevelopment discussions. How much is being encumbered by RDA 2? And how much is actually going into RDA 2 projects?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? So do we want to continue this agenda item until those questions are answered, councilwoman?
They just, they pointed out the, their issues in the report, the auditor did.
Okay, and they're, but they're going to get you follow-up information?
I mean, I hope to have that through budget. I think this is an internal process. It's got to be fixed.
Got you. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye? Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. B2, discussion of direction to staff and possible approval of the terms and conditions relating to Deppa Bank's consent to sell APN 008-370-12 and APN 008-381-31 to Waste Management for $1,115,037.30 pursuant to City Resolution Number 7542 and Redevelopment Agency Resolution Number 201. Jill?
Jill Olson for the Record Finance. This item is returning to you. This is the sale of the Retract Lease Parcel to Waste Management. We needed the bondholder or Deppa Bank's consent for the sale of this parcel. Deppa Bank has agreed and provided that consent. What they would like to see, though, or they want to make sure that the proceeds of the sale are applied to pay down the bond. They would also like to take the excess cash that's in the revenue fund. We have accumulated some additional cash in the revenue fund due to LIBOR being low. So we've saved some additional interest. They want to take that excess cash and also use that to pay down the principal on the bond, which staff is recommending in this case, because we will bring down debt service and we'll save about $1.5 million in interest over the remaining term of the bond. So those are the terms of consent that Deppa is proposing to the council. So staff would recommend approval of the sale of that parcel.
Just so we know what the number is, that excess cash, what is that number?
$2 million.
$2 million.
Yeah, it would go toward the debt service principal to pay down the bond.
And the length of the bond remaining, that $1.5 million would be saved over what period of time?
Over the remaining term of the bond. We're not extending the term of the bond. It would still be paid off around 2026.
Okay. Comments? Councilman Azzi?
Yeah. Does that include, do we have that $2 million, is that in an interest-bearing account now?
Yes.
And what's the, I mean, do you accumulate what we're going to lose on that by not having it anymore?
We're, it's in with the trustee. Right now, it's not, it's not accruing much interest. Maybe probably less than 2% or around 2%.
But that's a value over 15 more years.
That's a value.
What's approximately that value on $2 million over 15 years?
$600,000.
It's, it's actually less than what we would save on.
I'm just trying to see, because the other problem is, this is money that we're saving back, I'm assuming in reserves. If things get worse, that I could make my payments. And all I'm going to have is $350,000 remaining in this revenue. What are our payments?
Our, the payments on debt service are about, it varies over the life of the bond. But right now, it's going to be annually around $800,000 a year. But it's still going to be, we're still going to have excess.
So I'll only, but I'll only have less than six months in reserve?
And as the bondholder, they know that? They're the ones who would be at risk for that, but we believe that solely.
How would they be at risk? If we don't make the payments, then, I mean, we're getting threatened with, we're going to have all this stuff. It seems to me that it's not in my best interest to give them this deal.
Well, they're the ones who wouldn't get paid. I'm just saying that they're just, in projecting out the revenue based upon the amount of money that's needed for debt service and based upon what they believe LIBOR is going to do, they believe that the remaining $350,000 is enough excess, based upon the lease revenues that are coming in on the existing parcels, that there will be sufficient reserves remaining with the existing revenue that's coming in to cover debt service and still leave enough in the reserves to cover any fluctuations in the, in the interest rate.
And if there isn't, what happens?
Then we would use the $350,000 toward any debt service. Then we'd be talking about what we're talking about right now, as far as are we going to have enough money for debt service? And we have the addition, I believe, I'd have to look, but there may be an additional debt service reserve. I don't know if, Lynette didn't say. There may be an additional debt bond reserve with the trustee in addition to this excess cash reserve. So there's still additional, an additional debt bond reserve fund in addition to this cash reserve that we've accumulated as city cash because of the LIBOR being so low.
I mean, I would think that usually, though, in this economy, if someone offers to give them a balloon payment of $3.5 million, that they even might take a reduction, even more. I mean, they're sucking us dry for whatever they can get with nothing, I don't see an upside to us personally.
I mean, it's certainly counsel, up to counsel whether they want to use that. It's, it's money that can only be used toward the debt service anyway. They have the right to come in and sweep those accounts. So it's not money we can use for anything else anyway.
That is the key point. Anyway, they can come in and take that $2 million now, essentially, if they wanted to.
But don't make it a part of this, then come take it.
But I'll tell you that, you know, ask the same questions, saying there's only going to be $350,000. Are we comfortable that that is? And with our overall debt management and realizing that they can take this anyway, the answers I've received from all staff who were here was that this was advantageous in our overall structuring of our bonds, for what it's worth.
Was there any other offer made? For example, if they took, if we took half of it and kept the other half in reserve?
My understanding is that there were discussions that were held to not take quite this much, to leave more in the reserves. And that was not accepted, was my understanding. Is that not? I wasn't privy to all of the calls, but that was my understanding when I asked the question about only leaving $350,000.
Yeah, again, I wasn't privy to calls. The, Andrew Artusa, the city's financial advisor, was doing most of the discussions with the bank on this one. I believe the $2 million was what, what they wanted. Just as a couple, couple points, that, again, as Jill said, that money is pledged revenues, A. B, what it does is it, that $2 million pays down the interest rate. We're going to save about 1.5 over the term, plus it pays down the principal to the tune of about $3 million over the term. So again, we're reducing the par value there. It increases the coverage. From right now, it's close to, I think, a little bit potentially going under one times coverage. This pushes up the coverage to about 1.15 for the duration. In addition, the amortization schedule has an increased interest rate assumption built into it over and above what they, you know, the prior bond had into it. So it's assuming it's going to have a higher interest rate. So again, for all of those reasons, and again, the big reason is, in order to sell the Waste Management property at the end of the day, if that's the council direction and you want that, that would be, you know, kind of the quid pro quo here, so, for whatever that's worth.
Let me ask a question. We could sell the property. Can't we sell the property now and put the funding in the?
We cannot sell the property without the permission of the bank.
Correct, because that is a property that's specifically.
Pledge.
Of the ledge, yeah, the revenue from that property, be it a lease or be it the sale thereof, is pledged to the payment.
But we don't have to sell it. I mean.
No, we don't.
We don't. I mean, really, they're asking for a bailout for the Fitzgerald's Garage.
Actually, this doesn't go towards the Fitzgerald's Garage. This goes directly to the Retract Bond Debt, what the property is already pledged to. So this is, this is not tied to the Fitzgerald at this point.
How much do we have in reserve for the garage?
Jill Olson, if I recall correctly, I think it's around $700,000.
You know what? I just think they should be working with us on that before, to me, we're helping the banks by doing this deal.
I think there's definitely a benefit to us to do this deal. I mean, we've got, you're going to have interest savings, you're paying down the debt. You know, I mean, do you keep, I mean, what's our average interest rate on this? It's about five? Does that sound right? Four, a little over four? About, almost five?
That's correct.
I mean, we've, so we've got $2 million that really they have, it's their money anyway, that they can, they can come and take, that we're getting 2% interest on, and we're paying off debt that we're paying 5% interest on. I mean, there's a definite benefit to the city to do that.
I would agree with that part of it. And then the $350,000 that we're going to leave in reserve, that's going to continue to build up as well, right? Just like we got to the $2 million. So the $350,000 won't be $350,000 potentially six months from now. It'll be something more.
That's correct. As long as LIBOR stays low, we'll continue to pay the lower interest rate and excess revenue will accumulate in there as well. In addition, there's no lease revenue associated with this parcel at this time. So right now, the revenue associated is zero with that prop, with this one parcel.
Do you have an estimate on how, based on how we built up to the $2 million before, how quickly that $350,000 may actually go to $750,000 or a million?
I do not, but we could, I could have that run.
Okay.
Yes, Dave?
Yeah, I guess under discussion, if we're all done with questions.
Okay.
You know, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. These are the same guys who put us over the barrel in the Fitzgerald's Garage. I think they're backing us into a corner on this one. Giving us a small amount of money and assuming LIBOR doesn't go up and assuming this, this. But if it does, they've got us over the barrel on something else. And then, oh, no, it's not going to affect us at all unless it comes time where we might have to default. And then I'll.
And then all of a sudden, we have to kowtow to them once again. They've got no risk on this thing. They wanted originally for us to sell this property so they'd get the $1.5 million cash. And now they're sticking something else in there. They want the $2 million cash. If this property isn't generating revenue, that's our fault. They should be paying lease payments. And I would think that, I don't know, do the math, 15 years of lease payments on this might generate $1.5 million. Just back that out and say, we could do that savings by charge of Waste Management to lease that property. But I'm concerned, I have no problem selling it to Waste Management, but they're getting us down to nothing. Why make it a condition if they can just come take it? Just come take it? If that's what they can do. I mean, no offense, or maybe there is offense, we're listening to the same experts that got us into the problem in the first place. Same experts. And they're all saying, this is a good deal. And what did I hear here? I wasn't involved in the conversation. I wasn't involved in the conversation. The guy who was involved in the conversation isn't even here.
You really make a good point, and it goes back to the golden rule. He who has the gold rules. And that's what we're forced into right now. We're forced into that corner. Now, whether we want to accept that, that's the other, that's exactly it. I did a little quick math, and I'm sure everybody else can do it in their head, but I had to use paper. But you said, we get about 1.5%. Is that correct? Or 2%? What did you say?
I would have to look at the statements, but I think we're getting probably a little over 2% right now with the trustee, I'm estimating.
Okay. So that's $40,000 a year, 15 years, $600,000. The net between the 1.5 million or the $2 million and the $600,000 is $1,400,000 is a saving. But it is, like Councilman Assey says, that's if every, all the blocks fall in order. What happens if we come up short? And we've heard this at the meeting, the table before, about, well, you know, we won't have to worry about that because C-Tax will cover that or whatever will cover it. And I don't know. I, my initial reaction was to go ahead and accept the offer because it reduces debt. Anything that reduces debt seems to be the white ray to go about it. But I don't know what the other shoe to fall would be. That's the problem.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, certainly.
Jonathan, does this work the same way as the Fitzgerald's bond? If our revenues fall below what our debt service is, are we in default?
Correct.
So really, having this reserve doesn't really do much for us anyway, because much like the Fitzgerald's garage, we can't use that, those funds to pay debt service anyway unless they agree to it.
Correct.
And they're telling us we can't use those funds to pay debt service.
I'm sorry, can't use the...
On the Fitzgeralds, they're telling us we can't use those reserve funds to pay the debt.
No, no, we can use the reserve funds to pay...
But we're still in default.
We're, it's a covenant default.
We're in default because our revenues, because our revenues aren't meeting our debt service.
No, 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 we're in default is a covenant default because the lease, the Fitzgerald's lease is in default. And that creates a covenant default, not a payment default. So we've got, and Jill...
That's correct.
Right.
And that would be the same, we'd be in the same type of default if our revenues fell below our debt service on these other bonds?
If we fail to meet a coverage ratio, like, yeah, like at one point, we have one times coverage, right? And that's one of the advantages of doing this, paying down the par, is to, in fact, raise, and that's on the thing to get you to 1.15 coverage, so.
But why wouldn't we say, they're unwilling to work with us on the Fitzgerald's piece? Why don't we say, we want this and this and this on that bond deal before we're going to approve this?
We're the one that took this to them. They didn't come to us, we took it to them.
No, that's, no, they wanted us to sell both properties as a condition.
No, we went and asked if we could sell both properties, and they said, that's when they looked at making this whole thing, we'll let you sell both properties, but we want to roll all the debt into one. Well, since we're not selling both properties, we don't have the coverage to do that. We can't, we can't roll it all into one.
And in all honesty on this one, at this point in time, Waste Management has the funds to be able to do it. If I'm recalling this correctly, you have the ways, they have the monies available in the region right now. If we delay the sale of this land, the money may not be in the region within a month or two. And so they have asked us to proceed with the sale. We saw it as advantageous in building up our ratio and paying down principal and interest. The question was asked on the $350,000. All of the financial advisors I had advised to do that. And we're before you to see if you want to proceed with that sale. There is no lease on this property, I don't believe, right now. I'm not sure that this is the property that Waste Management is on.
Yeah.
It is the property Waste Management is currently on? I thought it was the one that they're...
It's what they're using their parking lot.
Is that correct?
Pete Wallace, Redevelopment Agency. This property is not currently used by Waste Management, the entire parcel. They are using a section of it for the parking lot, and I'd have to confirm if there's revenue. If there is, it's very little.
But the fact of the matter is, there is a portion that is undisputed, that is not theirs, that they're using at this point in time, so it is additional revenue that would be coming in to pay down the debt.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't Waste Management plan on building a $15 million facility on this piece of property?
Again, Pete Wallace with the Redevelopment Agency. I'd have to confirm on the dollar amount. I believe it is $15 million. It's 15 new time jobs, and it'll help retain the existing 285 that are at the facility across the street.
So it takes piece of property that has no, currently not producing any taxes, they build a $15 million facility on it, it's going to turn it into revenue from taxes and property taxes, whatever. I think that that needs to be taken into consideration too, it seems to me.
They also want to charge more fees to do it, though.
Yeah, that's only if we approve a new franchise agreement.
Yeah, with higher costs.
That's where we do have cloud.
I mean, they want us to charge the customer more to do it, so.
On the franchise fee?
Yeah.
Councilman Hesse.
Yeah, just to connect, help me connect the dots. Have we approved the sale agreement with Waste Management as of yet?
We've approved the sale agreement with Waste Management with one contingency outstanding, which is the consent of Deppa Bank for the sale.
Okay, and this is the last piece?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further comment?
I'll try it.
You know, okay, go ahead.
Move to approve.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and support the motion. I think, given the circumstances, this is the, having a chance to sit in a couple of those meetings with the mayor, it's not a perfect solution, but it's better than the alternative.
You know, I'm hesitantly going to support the motion because I think reducing debt is essential. It doesn't solve all the other problems we have, and I think there could be things on the horizon, Councilman Assey said, that we don't know. We faced that before, but I am going to support the motion. Councilman Ross.
I'm not going to support the motion for exactly what you said, Councilman Gessen. I think we have an obligation to get down our debt. And this does nothing, we have the same bank holding us hostage on the Fitzgerald's garage. And we have this, it's totally upside down. I feel like we should be trying to put that as part of this deal. They have every incentive to work with us because they don't, they need to get paid. I mean, these banks, I mean, they're doing this on the national level, they're doing it at a local level. I feel like we're getting held hostage to these big banks, and we're not negotiating with them for the best deal for the city. And I think those two, they wanted to tie the two in together, let's tie them in together. They need to reduce, they need to work with us on the garage. All we're doing is giving them a windfall here. And I understand, we save the money with interest. I'm not disputing that, the debt service payment and everything, but we still have another $6 million bond that we have to deal with on that garage. And I just feel like we're bailing them out.
They did give us the authority to go after the tenant, so to me, that was, I know, but it's a good start presumably, so that gives us an opportunity to realize on that property that we didn't have before, so.
Councilman Assey?
I guess I have to question our experts, if they had the ability to take the $2 million, why haven't they? Why would they make it a condition of this sale? That's the part that bothers me, is if they could do it, then they would have done it. Everybody's cash hungry, they would have taken the money. And part of it is, we could go into probably a lease purchase agreement without any approval from them with Waste Management, so they could, a long-term lease where they can build. I mean, it just bothers me that every time these guys say something, we don't negotiate with them like we're in a position of power, which we sort of are. We've got the cash or the potential buyers. $8,000 a month is what, if we leased that property forward, make up $1.5 million over 20 years, over 15 years. And our staff didn't, they said we're going to save $1.5 million because of the 5% interest we're paying, but they didn't include the 2% interest we're getting. So that reduces the 1.5%. I just think that these guys, we should talk to them and say, this is what's got to happen. They're not releasing us from anything else. If we sell the other piece of property, that's got to go to them. I think they're getting a windfall here, and we're stuck with nothing.
Madam Manager, if I can ask you the question, because I'm on the dilemma, the same thing, and I don't want to be the guy who continues everything, but do we have bargaining power to go back and say, look, the points have been raised by two of the council people, that we put it all in one bucket? Or, I mean, we, reducing debt is, and that's my conservative financial nature coming out, obviously, but what advantages can we take on this? Can we go back to them and say, look, our council is split on this, we want to reduce debt, but we want to also have some authority about how this money, this $2 million, what can we do about that? Can we, where are we between a rock and a hard spot? Both sides make great points, in my opinion.
I think the question is whether or not we'll have a buyer by the time we get back from having the second question, and I don't have the answer to that. We may or may not have a buyer for the property.
And I know that the representative from Waste Management said that money was encumbered and his 2010 budget can carry it over, and it may not be there in 2011. I don't have an answer for that either.
But could we do a long-term lease? We don't have to hold it up as cash.
If the council wants us to go back and see if we can work a different deal that you would prefer, we will do that.
I just want to know if we legally could.
Pete Wallace with the Redevelopment Agency. The cash was encumbered in 2010 with Waste Management. The company has now reallocated that money, and they're in the process of coming back. They anticipate the money being in escrow by the middle of February, but that is uncertain.
It's uncertain, I'm sorry, Pete, it's uncertain whether the money has been transferred to some other account or to something else with it, so they're not even sure they have the $1.1 million?
Correct.
Well, that changes the profile.
Yeah, that's true.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Chris Barrett representing Waste Management, we do have those funds available, ready to wire upon approval of today's agenda item.
So you're saying Waste Management, just reiterate what you're saying. It is, those bodies are available?
Those funds are available, yes.
What if it's not approved? What if it's not approved?
If it's, if today's agenda item is not approved, move forward. We'll have to take that back to the senior management and see what they want to do with that or not.
So has Waste Management signed the agreements to purchase the property yet? So if we sign it, they're under obligation to buy it, whether they have the money or not?
Again, Pete Wallace, Redevelopment Agency, the documents have been signed, and they are in escrow.
Oh, they are in escrow. So whether they have the money or not, they got to pay us. They got to find it somehow.
I'd have to confirm with legal what the ramifications would be if they wanted to back out of the deal.
Yeah, the contingency still is approval of Deppa Bank, so if they don't approve...
And the city council, that's the other contingency.
Well, yeah, to the extent that the bank is making, you approve it as well, right, correct.
Mr. Mayor, to David's point, on a long-term lease, you probably need the bank's permission to do that.
No, we can lease the property out all we want.
But the property, isn't property part of collateral?
Yes.
But we could still have a long-term lease on that land and take the revenue?
We could do that.
Just for the record, yes, you can go and lease that property. And again, any revenue that would have been generated by that lease would be pledged towards the repayment of that fund, so.
Okay, I certainly don't like the outcomes of this, but I think some great points made at the table about cutting down debt, putting a building on, as a member Scott said, which will derive some income. I don't think it's at all a perfect solution at all, but I will support that. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Yeah, just one subtle point. I just need to have legal confirm to Dave's point. I agree, we can go ahead and lease it. I agree that those lease payments are encumbered, and that would go, you know, to the bank. But what's the reality of somebody entering into a long-term lease if it's already collateralized by the bank, and if we default, they have the opportunity to take the property? Isn't that part, isn't that part of the dilemma?
That the bank has the opportunity to take the property?
Right.
No, they don't have the opportunity. Under the lease revenue bond law, they do not have any, any interest in the property.
Okay.
Now, potentially, and we've talked about it before, if we get in upside down and that becomes, you could be forced into a receivership type of situation in the courts to enforce the bonds, that potentially you could have a sale of that property under a court receivership sort of situation.
Right, but the result's the same. I mean, why, if I'm a lessee, why would I enter into a long-term lease? And this is what I thought one of the issues was, Dave. And put money into that property under a lease arrangement as opposed to buying it free and clear from this potential, you know, loss of collateral? Nobody's going to enter into a lease agreement knowing that potentially it could be sold in receivership.
Got you.
Okay, any further comments?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, this, my no vote's not against Waste Management, it's the bank. I have no issue with Waste Management. I just want you to know that. My issue is with the banks.
Yep, understand. Okay, let's call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to two, or five to two. You can't vote. Four to two. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move to public hearing C one. We're advised by legal counsel, we need to open this and then continue it. Is that correct? Motion to continue, we have, do we have a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chasen, Reno City Attorney's Office. To save noticing costs, is there a specific date you want to continue to? Because they will have to re-notice.
It's noticed by publication.